Okay, good morning, everybody. Is Pastor Olmer here with the New Life Gulf Coast Church? Pastor, would you mind doing our invocations?
Father, we pause this morning in recognition that all government and all authority rests in you. Father, we're thankful today for these men and women who serve our community. And today, Lord, as they deliberate, as they legislate, as they lead our community, Father, we pray that, as your words promised, we can ask for wisdom and you'll give it. So, Lord, I thank you today for their service. I thank you today, God, for all the things that they do to keep our community safe and moving forward. And I pray today, God, that you would crown this time with your presence, that you would watch over every decision and every discussion, and that ultimately you would be pleased in all that's said and done here today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much.
Pastor Paul, do we have any prayers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Abby, before we wrap up, can we have just a moment of silence for our federal judge in the Southern District Commission, George Loe, please. He passed away. Please. Thank you. He was a young man.
Pancreatic cancer.
Yes, very. Let's recognize the mayor, Fofo Village, and Peter A. Byatt, to discuss his beautification project. Happy.
Thank you, Madam President. It's something I think that we can do together. We've done some great things and passed together, and we're hoping that you see what we've gotten in the middle of. A few weeks ago, we talked to some of you and understanding what needs to be done to get us down the road. And, you know, we've had a tremendous tourism year. We've had a tremendous cruising week, and we're hopeful that we can do some things in short term. They'll have some long-term benefits. We discussed with some of your group on what we're thinking about. Last week, week before last, we engaged our council unanimously, providing about $200,000 in funding for about a million-dollar project. Of course, we could spend, as I explained at Coastal Mississippi, we could spend $3 million on that beach. You know, we have 4.2 million visitors a year, and it's got to be top-notch. It's got to be, you know, look like a destination. So, that's what we're trying to do together, is get something that, you know, has been building up since from Zeta, from Ida, and just even Nicholas, things that are accruing and stacking up that we need to take action on. So, we're here today asking, again, to join us in funding. I think we have about $510,000 left. There's some before and after pictures of that beach primarily, you know. Personally, for Biloxi, we actually put 15 more people on payroll to help, you know, in the beautification. Safe, friendly, and beautiful. I think that's our mantra. You get them here once, they'll come back. But this is a big part of what we need to do together. So, I think the proposal was, we're asking for $200,000. Coastal Mississippi joined in last week in providing that. And there's some before and actual after pictures there to say, this is what we're going to do. Again, it's, you know, sand is stacked up for whatever reason. I've engaged the governor and I've engaged M.D.O.T. in the cooperation, what we need to do together. We're going to get it where we could possibly add more parking, put more stamped concrete, something where Chuck can blow the sand off at least that area. And the long term, it's going to be better. Again, we've taken some action at the Lighthouse Park, and you see the before and after. Some of my loved palmetto trees are gone, but anyway, that's what we want. We want the whole look and feel. We had to start, you know, Biloxi was the natural place to start, we thought, and that's right. And they kind of agreed with us. You know, we have 7,000 hotel rooms, and a lot of people stay here, and a lot of people see that beach. So, we're doing what we need to do to enhance the gateways and the look and feel that visitors will see.
Is Chuck here? Chuck also met with the mayor just at the boardroom.
Right.
And feels like this idea that he has for beautification on the mediums and all would be easier to maintain. They could sweep that sidewalk as opposed to...
Right. Blow it off instead of having to holler for things. In this first phase, which just went from DeVries Road to around the Coliseum, 100 truckloads of sand is what was removed. And again, there are pictures all the way down. You know, it all needs to be done together. I'm not saying, you know, about the rest of the coast, but I know what we need to do. And I'm all in. We're pushing it all in. We've engaged a guy named Christian Prius, who has, who does all the landscape engineering and that sort of thing for Fairhope, Alabama, and it's top-notch. So, there's some cross-sections of what we're trying to do, the grade we need to leave, and then the enhancements around it. This is just not clear in sand. This is actually the ability to, you know, clear the debris around these oak trees and put a base on it, and so it's easy to maintain. You know, it is an effort. We need to step that effort up to together, hey, this is the place. You know, the people are knocking on my doors every day, or how, what can I do to get down here? And that's a big part of, you know, we've got things happening almost nonstop, and that we've got to keep that look and keep that attitude. You're going to come in, you'll love it, and you come back and love it. And we did. Pretty much a record gaming year. So, that means, you know, people are visiting this place, and they'll come back if we do the right things. So, you know, I talk too fast and talk a lot, so whatever. I'm here to answer any question.
You said you need a million dollars?
That was a million dollars' worth of work. We started, again, we came up with a plan. It's not, we're not asking for, we just got $510,000 left. So, you get a million dollars' worth of work, and $2 million's worth of benefit, that's what.
$200,000.
But you look for just $200,000. We just asked you today for $200,000.
$200,000. Come on. I call it a dime, and you're lucky. Yeah, it's $200,000.
Yeah. Well, yeah, take a look at, you know, it needs to be done. Just go drive down and see what's there and what needs to be gone and what needs to be... And again, we've got some assurances from the M.D.O.T. Red White is the new M.D.O.T. director, and as well as the governor. Governor had mentioned, and of course, I asked him for a million and a half.
How far down? How far?
Well, this project started at DeVries Road and we're working all the way to the bridge.
It's a total list to do the whole?
The whole thing. The whole million, I mean, it's a tremendous amount of work. If you just visit Fairhope and you see the detail, they don't have the sand we have, but this guy, Christian, knows what he's doing and has done some work, I think, in planning for Ocean Springs. But the grade, what you want to wind up with is what we want. And there's a, I think, some of the initial proposal, and you may be seeing, but anyway, it's the whole package. That's what we want to work with. So, this will get us down where the next phase is up to M.D.O.T. Hey, now, you supply the concrete and that look and feel, so you don't have to blow it off. Chuck doesn't have to scrape it off, and we, you know, we're where we need to be for next season.
From Chuck, totally. Just so y'all know, that when M.D.O.T. goes to get the sand up, it pushes it off to the county's property and city.
Yeah. You put the third picture in here.
It makes it harder to clean.
They'll take, they'll take a three-foot.
We do it at the bays, don't we? The parking bay, we pick up, they pick up just the highway.
And just keep the highway clean. But they'll take a blade and they'll push it off three feet, and it stacks up. You know, we try to...
The mayor that they would try to work better with the sand beach.
Right. They helped us in this stop, but, you know, we're actually going to press them. This is, we're going to do this. We're engaged to do this work. Now, what can we do together? You know, there's a lot of places, you know, three foot, four feet between the seawall and the curb, and you can't keep that clean with anything. So, put some nice look, I think DeArberville, Skuller Pearl did some things with stamped concrete. Then Chuck is able to just blow that back into, then reach the highway so it's not contaminated. And, you know, it could go back on the beach. And of course, you know, what we're doing together with the new wall and between Oak Street, that'll give us a path for an additional boardwalk, another 10 feet to walk and enjoy the beach. And that may, raising that profile will, not so much where it's going right now, but in the future. I think Chuck and I said, our next step is between Port Avenue and White Avenue, and that's where some sand really falls. So, you know, it's a strategy, it's not a tactic. We're ready for the long-term plan, and in five years, we won't see these things. We won't ask for the monies that we're asking for today.
And you said it's not going to be contaminated, so that means it's keeping it out of all the landfills, too.
That's right.
So, it's really a turn-on investment.
But what, if, I mean, it will be contaminated once it crosses...
Once it gets on the highway, yeah.
Correct. But he's saying it keeps it on.
And then also, you know, Nicholas happened the other day. Once it gets on the highway, the water flows through those, through the water, and the sand is taken to the outfalls, okay? So, it's contaminated, whether it's using or not. There are 100 truckloads of sand is what we did in this first go-around. It's a lot of sand. Where are you going to put 100 truckloads of sand? That's a big part of what's going on. This is a turnkey kind of application, and it's their problem. Of course, the people, you know, want sand, and so, but I think this is, you know, back to the buck, and again, every time we do some things unanimously, the word gets out. You know, we've done, we've been successful.
That might be what we're concerned about, that every other city will be asking.
Well, that's okay. You know, we looked at it, and that's what they asked me. And I said, well, why are we doing it in Biloxi? Because we've got 7,000 hotel rooms. We do 50% of your business. Okay?
There you go. Thank you.
Pam.
I'm going to do the same. I noticed a little riff in the conscious thing, so.
Is there money? Where could we find the money to give to the mayor or for the beautification? Would that come out of Sand Beach?
We can do it out of Sand Beach. It's for beach and ocean stuff.
Because that's kind of what I was thinking, and Chuck, I don't know where Chuck is. He's probably tired from working all week.
You know, also, Mayor...
He made that suggestion.
Also, years ago, the State Highway Department used to help us. They used to buy the sea oats and help us put them in, but they stopped that.
Yeah.
And now, their cost has tripled and doubled because we don't have the sand dunes to stop it.
Right. Well, that's, that's what caused this problem, you know. It needs to stay on the beach. Sand needs to stay on the beach, whether it's heavy or sand or, you know...
I would say also, when I spoke with you, and then last, we were doing the weekend, I wrote down the beach during the cruise. I'm going to tell you, it makes a difference.
Oh, it does.
The sand that you put in place makes a difference.
That's right. And last words, I don't know if I said it already, but last words with the governor, he said, I agree, I will help you if I can legally, you know, if I get the money from one place, but image matters.
Excellent.
I mean, that was an image matters. He said, that never has come down from M.D.O.T. before. Image matters, and this is all about what we need, that image.
So, could we make a motion?
I've been trying to do it for 36 years.
I know. Well, this is your opportunity right now, so.
I'll make a motion to take $200,000 of sand beach budget to go ahead and do this wonderful idea.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, and further discussion. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. You'll make my day and my week, and my year. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. I'm excited.
And it does look nice.
Peter, you want to say something?
No. Oh, yeah. You want to stick around and watch John's presentation?
Yeah, I'll do that. We'll do that.
Want to go to the person?
Thank you all.
Number two, recognize Kathy Strangl, CEO of United Way of South Mississippi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, I wanted to come before you today to update you on the activities of United Way of South Mississippi in the last 12 to 18 months. I know we were together last year, but so much has happened that I know you guys are in the thick of it. United Way of South Mississippi covers Harrison, Hancock, Pearl River, and Stone County. So, what I'll focus on today is what has gone on in Harrison County. And I put some flyers in front of you, but in response to COVID-19, we have been responding and are still responding to COVID. We have put $405,000 on the street in response to COVID. Every nickel that we got in went out. Your United Way did not take a fee on disaster money. We put it right back out. So, what came in, went out for medicine, for rent, for utilities, for basic needs, for PPE, and the other things that our citizens were struggling to maintain and to obtain. Catholic Charities manages the Utilities Assistance Program for Coastal Electric and Mississippi Power. Your United Way is the fiscal manager on that project. They do the case management on that. And even though we may not fund Open Door Homeless Coalition, we collaborate with them every single day. Our phone number seems to be the conduit where we match up our citizens with the services and help them with the struggles that they are going through at the moment. We collaborate with Goodwill. In fact, last, two weeks ago, we went to Homa with two big truckloads, gifts from our people here in South Mississippi to the people in South Louisiana. That United Way lost it all, lost the building, lost everything. So, we felt it was payback time. So, we did those things. We responded to Hurricane Zeta, and I know that you guys know this, but we collaborate with the Community Foundation, Goodwill Catholic Charities, and others to form the Harrison County Long-Term Recovery Committee. In that Long-Term Recovery Committee, Your United Way is the phone number. We're the ones that take every call from citizens following a storm. We took over 4,000 phone calls, and it's probably more, but that's how many, that's how many people called us, because some called us every single day. We took work orders from the people. We found a lot of our elders own the home but don't have the insurance coverage to take care of that wind damage. Electrical boxes being knocked off the house. We established a fund with Catholic Charities. We found that to be a real problem, and those electricians cost money. You know, the power company can't just put the power into the house if there's no box. So, we found that problem and put a fund together to help people for that. I know I heard from many of you during that time when your constituents would call you needing assistance, and you would call Your United Way for help. There's so many of those stories. We went out to people's houses. We personally took food. We, I mean, there were many a day when my staff would pull whatever few dollars in their purse they had to hand to somebody who was hungry or stranded. That happens at Your United Way. We did respond to Ida over in Pearl River County. That seemed to be where the most damage was, so we did work with that EOC over there. In May, we gave $440,000. That's separate from that COVID money and community impact grants to 12 local nonprofits, and you can see those on this form that I gave you. In Harrison County, Boys and Girls Clubs, CASA of Harrison County, for the first time ever, Catholic Charities, Disability Connection, the Center for Nonviolence, More Community House, The Nourishing Place, and St. Vincent de Paul Community Pharmacy. So, we are addressing education, health care, and financial stability. We have nine free preschool classrooms in this county, nine. Eight in Harrison County schools, one in Gulfport schools, serving 180 four-year-olds in quality pre-K with certified teachers and teachers' assistants in every classroom. Four-year-olds are ready to go to school. Our kids are reading when they graduate from pre-K. They hit kindergarten reading. Some children hit first grade with no pre-K and no kindergarten. The Harrison County School District has been an exceptional, beautiful partner on this project. We work very closely with Mr. King and their, and their school board and their individual principals. Oftentimes, in pre-K, things are identified, such as the need for speech services or some other kind of therapy, or we get them into the reduced and free lunch program at that age. That's a beautiful thing for families. We collected over 28,000 diapers. When you hand a young mama a bag of Pampers, that's like a bag of money.
You can say that again.
We collected over 19,000 school supplies, and if we collect them in Biloxi, they stay in Biloxi. If we collect them up in Sosha, they stay in Harrison County or wherever it is. We don't move that stuff around. But y'all, Your United Way is working. We have never left the job. We never went home. We went home for a few days and hated it and had to come right back into the office. People depend on us, and we depend on this Board of Supervisors to support the work that we do. So, I'm not here to ask you for money today. We'll take it if you want to give it to us. But what we are here to ask you to do is to allow us to campaign in the county offices. Since that first time that we came before you and asked you, could we campaign? The Harrison County Jail has become a beautiful partner with us. We are there at 5:00 a.m. when the shift changed, and the work they do is unbelievable. And they have really come out and supported this United Way. So, what we ask you today is to allow us to campaign in the county offices again this year. That's how we raise our money. And I'm going to tell you, our campaign was down last year, and we still accomplished this. We were down about $160,000 last year. That's a lot. And something that I want you to know is that we are a member of the United Way worldwide. Our money does not sweep out of these counties. Our money stays here. We are a separate entity. We pay a fee to be a member of that, 1.5%, but everything we raise stays in these counties, and we put it to work in these counties. One thing I want to leave you with is I want to leave you with Alice. Asset limited, income constrained, but employed. Your United Ways in Mississippi completed the Alice Report this year. It is online, unitedwayalicemississippi. Google it, and I will bring you all a hard copy of the Alice Report, but it's there online. 50% of families in Harrison County are at poverty, are in Alice or below. What Alice means is that's the working poor. Alice makes too much to get benefits but does not earn the survival budget. 82% of single female-led households are Alice or below. Alice or below. That report is there for you, and it will tell you all across this Gulf Coast and across our state who is struggling to make ends meet. Why is free pre-K important? Because I'm going to tell you, most of those kids are part of that 82% of a single female-led household. They can't afford it, and that's why the work we're doing is important for those children. We tutored over 800 kids last year who were identified as not reading on grade level through The Nourishing Place in Gulfport. Kids need our support. That's what we're doing every day. I appreciate the support that you give us, and again, I ask you to allow us to campaign in the county offices. You know, even if someone only gives us $2 a pay period, we can really make that go a long way. And also, most of our team is here today. That's Your United Way staff sitting on those two rows. They work hard every day. They spend time on the phone with our citizens every day, making sure that we get them to the right place. And I will answer any question you have about what goes on at United Way of South Mississippi.
Well, I just, I'd like to thank you for the great job that you're doing, and if it needs to be put into a motion that we allow this, I'd be more than happy to make that first motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second and a further discussion. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You do a great job.
Thanks, y'all. Appreciate it.
Take care of our working poor.
Yes, yes.
Okay, let's go to Jackie Turner, here as tenant engineer, and Derek Bullock, engineer and project manager for Harrison County Utility Authority, to discuss major infrastructure projects in Harrison County.
Good morning, everyone. A few weeks ago, y'all asked specifically if we would put together a priority list of the kind of backbone and skeleton projects that we need to move from where we were after Katrina to supporting all the developments that we see coming in today. So, we have met several times going through everything. We're seeing from the planning department through engineering as far as developments that are coming. We've talked with West Harrison. We've talked with the Traditions engineers and whatnot to make sure that we're getting all this information in one place, as well as getting feedback from board members, as you've offered it, as far as what projects are important to you. And so, what we've done here is put together kind of a summary of projects that we think are important and somewhat of a priority list, but that's really up to y'all to decide. We want to show you what we think is important and kind of get your feedback as to how you want us to move forward with that. So, Derek's going to kind of run with it and let us know if you have any questions as you go.
Hey, good morning. I'm Derek Bullock. I'm here on behalf of Harrison County Utility Authority. Anytime a new development takes place in the county, we have to issue a permit to make sure that we have capacity to treat that sewer. So, what this project is, or what this presentation is, to show areas that we're receiving the most requests. The unincorporated areas are growing exponentially right now, and we're receiving several requests for water and sewer in those areas. Current projections are finally catching up population pre and post Katrina. The major infrastructures through the CDBT program are, they have to be expanded, and many of those, these projects do just that. The Utility Authority, we provide wastewater treatment for entire Harrison County, wholesale water service, solid waste collection for all of its member agencies. We also provide retail water and sewer in the unincorporated and unfanchised areas of the county. The following is a list of projects that we coordinated through the RCO Engineering Department, some of the Board of Supervisors, to help accommodate new growth and development. This is a spreadsheet of the proposed projects in one area, and what I'd like to do is touch on each of the projects and why we feel it's important. So, what we did is identify the demand in those areas and how urgent they are to come up with this list, and which ones generate the most revenue. Also, we've included how many, how much acreage each project affects. So, we feel like this is the most urgent and pressing project right now. The Tradition, Highway 605, Highway 67 corridors growing exponentially. We're getting letters of request for sewer in that area almost weekly. We have a sewer treatment plant, we have a sewer treatment plant at Traditions that's not being utilized currently.
Why?
It's right there. So, the problem is, we don't have any collection areas that send sewer to the plant. We've got all this undeveloped area, and we've got developers that want to build, yet we need a transmission line to get that sewage to the plant. Currently, there's only one main right here that goes down a dirt road to accommodate all of Traditions. But right now, we've got this area here around Dogwood and Carbridge Roads. We've got developers wanting to build. I've got a big development here that borders Three Rivers and 67. 800 lot development proposed on the east side of Tradition, and we don't have a way to get them sewer. So, we've coordinated with EGPOD. Y'all familiar with EGPOD, the East Central Harrison County Utility District? And their engineer, BMA, they're currently working on projects to accommodate their area, but we would like to piggyback with them and join forces and make these projects into one. So, right now, the BA administration building is going in here, and EGPOD is planning on building a large pump station in this area and sending all that flow to the plant. But what we would like to do is combine that project with one that could accommodate flows from the south, put that pump station here. We could take St. Patrick's pump station offline and either take one or two routes directly to the plant. So, that would be a combined project with EGPOD. Also, to accommodate this area to the south, we need a large pump station here. That would accommodate this development, this 1,600 acres, to send that all the way to the plant. It's just not feasible for each developer to spend the money on infrastructure to send their water and sewer all the way to a treatment plant. All right. Second project is Canal Road. This is between Highway 53 and John Clark Road. We've got requests for subdivisions around Inman Knoll and north. Also, the water system in Gulfport on John Clark Road is at the very limits of their capacity. So, what, we also have a large water line on Highway 53. What we're proposing to do is to connect Highway 53 down Canal Road to Gulfport system. Now, that does two things. It provides capacity for all the undeveloped areas on Canal Road, and it also generates revenue by sending some of that water to the city of Gulfport, and it boosts their fire protection for their, for their customers, sorry, in this area here. We've got, I know that we have a developer that's wanting to build pretty urgently, and we'd love to see that project happen.
Derek, may I turn it up? I didn't mean to go back, but the water supply... I didn't mean to go back, but the water supply for Highway 67 basically is fine, right?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I did not touch on water. We have major transmission mains that come from the water well and tank at Traditions. They go around, we call it the turtle back of Traditions, and down 67. Water capacity and service is not an issue at all. We also have a water main on Carbridge Road that goes to this subdivision here. Let me touch on that. So this subdivision here is called the Reserve. They built a pump station for their subdivision only. That pump station has a main that goes down Carbridge, up 67, all the way to St. Patrick. Okay? We cannot put any more sewage in that main. It's at capacity. It's too small to accommodate any more flow. So what this project would do is basically upsize that pipe and accommodate all this growth here. Also, for future development, we'll get to another project that could tie into that as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't mean to backtrack.
No, that's okay. So this is existing, like I was talking about on Canal Road. We've got the water main on 67, I mean, I'm sorry, on 53. And this is the proposed line. This outline here is the areas that it would affect. I feel like that's something that's desperately needed. All right, in the same area...
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Point something out to the board. This is one of the projects, one of the budget discussions with the Utility Authority, that the one point roughly, where's John? Roughly $1.9 million that we took off the county budget.
Yes, sir.
This is one of the projects that was proposed.
And this is John, our director, for the record. John Wilson is the director of Utility Authority. Thank you for being here.
The next project, are y'all familiar with the Flat Branch Interceptor that's recently installed along Canal Road? And it took a sewer lagoon offline north of there. But in this area...
Oh, for me, it was.
I was going to say...
I'm being modest.
That's fantastic. Anybody on the Utility Authority would recognize all we can make.
Well, we're familiar with it, but the other supervisors... Okay. So we actually have sewer flowing through that line. It's actively in service as of last week.
It's like a halaloo, y'all.
Yeah. A lot of hard work went into that.
That's River Bend, right?
Yes, sir.
I like how you have AKAs 14, because that always became...
Right, so I think the mayor talked about branding earlier. We've kind of got away from S-14. We're calling it the Flat Branch Interceptor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wonder why.
Good idea, Derek.
So this line, this is a sewer line, the green line, is currently active. It flows all the way to the North Gulfport Treatment Plant. So all of this sewer in the unincorporated area flows to North Gulfport. We've got a brand-new treatment plant up here on Old Highway 49 called River Hills that is currently active as well. This project made that happen. So what we're proposing to do is take all this flow of sewage from the unincorporated areas and send it to that plant. And this is kind of an either-or approach. So if we installed a pump station along Canal Road in this S-14 or Flat Branch Interceptor, this is the drainage basin that it could accept sewer and send it to, here's the treatment plant here. We would install a force main up Canal Road and up Old 49.
So what you're saying, Derek, is we originally planned for that to go to North Gulfport, and now if we do this project, it's going to reverse and go to the plant at River Hills?
Yes, sir, and that solves two issues. One, it takes flow off of North Gulfport, which is nearing capacity.
Well, and it gives a fluent to that plant.
Yes, sir.
So we can put it online.
It puts that plant to work, and it takes the revenue from the county and keeps it in the county.
Right, sure, that's right.
So there's two areas you could put it. One is here along Canal Road, and I think that accommodates about 2,200 acres. But if you put it here on Old 49, you pick up an additional 2,200 acres. You also, so Gulfport, the city of Gulfport has water and sewer in this area here. You alleviate all that flow from the wastewater treatment plant, send it to River Hills, and you could pick up additional revenue from the city. It actually, it's a two-pronged approach. It helps them with more capacity at their plant, and it helps the county with more revenue and keeps this, gets this plant going. So there's a pretty significant cost difference between the two. You're going to have to upsize everything to accommodate that additional flow, and you could easily run a force main up Old 49 all the way to the plant. This is Beet Line Road between the railroad tracks and 28th Street. We get requests for sewer in this unincorporated area constantly, and the majority of it is commercial development. The health department will not issue a permit for a septic tank in this area. They're making these developers run sewer all the way to our facilities. Like we talked about earlier, it's just not economically feasible for them to put in infrastructure for more than just themselves. So what we're proposing to do, currently, we don't have anything along that road. We do have water, by the way, just not sewer. So what we're proposing to do is...
You're talking about sewer, you're talking about collections.
Yes, sir.
Not the main, isn't there a main?
No, sir. It goes down Red Creek Road.
Go outside.
If you see these green dots here, those are the manholes on Red Creek Road. We currently do not have any collection down this area. And the city of Long Beach, their limits are at this corner. Now, they have collection down 28th Street, but we don't have anything for the county.
And Derek, again, if we may, if we have water and we don't have sewer, you can cut off water, but you can't cut off sewer.
That's a very good point.
If people do not pay their bills, we have little leverage.
Right, the only thing you can do is put a lien on their property, and the fact that you're never going to collect those fees if they don't pay. But you can cut a water meter off. So I think that this is a really good project to spur some commercial development. I know that we've had several people ask, several engineers request to tie into our sewer line. There's also a few houses here on 28th Street that have been asking for sewer, and their septic tanks are starting to become of age and collapse. We really need to get them into the collection system.
They're not in the city.
They're in the city.
No, I have 28th Street, the county's south, and they're in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
This 28th Street device, unincorporated area, the county could...
So in 2016, we had a CDBG project put in sewer in the Pineville area. As a part of that project, there was a small section of Freddie Frank Road that was taken out during construction. And what we would like to do, let me show you. Currently, we have sewer on Freddie Frank Road to Dubby's Lane. We have it on Red Creek Road to Espy. We would like to go ahead and finish that project from 2016 and help these folks out who need sewer. I've worked in that area, and I know that groundwater conditions are really bad, and septic tanks are just not ideal. That's why this project was put into place several years ago.
All right, I think we already have all the easements out there because we had to cut back on that. That should save some of the costs, shouldn't it?
Right, we probably have a lot, I have to go back and check, because we got, didn't get... It was taken out because of lack of funding.
Yes, sir.
The grant ran out, not because anybody wanted to.
Right.
Exactly, because we did that with money.
Right.
Derek, I'm sorry, for my imagination, what does it mean when you say the groundwater is really bad?
So when you have a high groundwater table, when you have a septic tank, when that water enters the septic tank, it has to flow out into a leach field? Well, if you have high groundwater, it can't go anywhere. It doesn't percolate.
It's saturated.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That was one of the key things with all the CAF programs is the high groundwater makes... The way the septic tanks work is the sewer goes into the ground and percolates, you know, down into the groundwater. Well, if the groundwater stops that, you just have a pollution issue. That property is near the river, so, you know, the groundwater is almost tied to the river elevation.
Yeah, I could drink of it.
When you have good sandy conditions and the water drains well, the septic tanks are okay, but that's not the case here.
Okay, thank you. I don't have septic.
Next project on the list is West Harrison has requested to put water and sewer down Fire Tower Road. Now, currently, this is at the Minj Avenue, Fire Tower Road, exit off of I-10 north. Currently, we have...
This is by the way, Derek, I'm just imploring for...
Yes, sir.
This is West Harrison Water and Sewer District.
Yes, sir. We've been asked to incorporate this for a couple reasons, which this project has a couple different benefits aside from that. Currently, we have water here at Fire Tower Road in Cunningham. We also have sewer on Mabui Road, but we don't have any collection systems north of there. And these two, the water and sewer, go directly to the plant. So what we're proposing to do is install water and sewer from those areas all the way to Cable Bridge Road. Now, one of the key components of this project is we have the Pecan Grove Waste Management Landfill on Fire Tower Road. Currently, the landfill, they have waste from rainwater that leaves their landfill. It's called leachate. Currently, they are trucking that raw leachate sewage to Liberty, Mississippi, and that trucking cost is growing every year. So what we've been asked to do is take that liquid called leachate and put it into one of our treatment plants. If we build a collection system, it not only benefits the residents of this area, it benefits the landfill, which we benefits entire Harrison County. We actually get a cost savings in our yearly contract with them. So this project here is, I believe it's been talked about for a couple of years, but right now would be a great opportunity to bring it to life.
That's, Derek, and John, that's still going to require some pretreatment before we do, before we accept that leachate. They're going to have to meet certain conditions. So it's not automatic, I want to understand.
It is most definitely not automatic. It's predicated on them providing pretreatment of that leachate and then discharging it in the system and going to the dilute treatment plant.
It could damage the plant if it's not pretreated.
Exactly. It's a commercial sewer that has to be pretreated.
There's some demos going to take place. We're going, I think it's 30,000 gallons a day that they truck. Is that what it is already?
Yes.
There's some pretreatment demos can happen during the short...
That's right. I think they supposed to let us know about that.
Yes, sir, and we've been meeting with Waste Management every two weeks to get updates on this project. And they're already permitted to build lagoons to pretreat that leachate, and that's the direction that they're looking at going, is actually putting in their own pretreatment before they send it to us. We'll test it regularly to make sure it's within the limits, and then we'll accept it. But this is a very important project for all the county.
Which is a big reduction to, would be a reduction to our garbage bills.
Yes, ma'am. So we pay per cubic yard, per ton, for space in that landfill. Well, this reduces the cost for us for the next 30 years. This is the County Farm Road, Landon Road area. I've been getting a lot of requests from developers to put in sewer in this area. Again, we find ourselves with water and no sewer. West Harrison High School is just south of this intersection. We actually have a pump station that takes the sewage from West Harrison, but we don't have anything north of there. And I know recently we had a request to develop this large lot here and also this area here. So what we would like to do is put in a sewage collection system to help that area grow. This is a pretty cut-and-dry project. We don't have it. We see a need there. Let's put in sewer.
When you say collection, or do you mean transfer?
Well, that, it would be a transmission main to receive the collection from those areas. I would suspect that each developer, they build their own collection system to turn over to the Utility Authority.
One of the things about this, and what's good about all these projects is talking about that when they receive the $240 million CDBG grant, they would not allow us to put collection systems in. And even though we asked, they would not allow it. And keep in mind, without the collection system, even though that was non-bonded, and it did save, we did put transmission lines in, we did not add collection. We had to upfront, or we do every year in our budget, the Utility Authority budget is for the O and M of those transmission lines. Without a collection system, we get no revenue for it. So you're coming out of your general budget every year to pay for the O and M. So that's how we can put in a collection system that reduces our O and M costs. Or not necessarily that reduces our O and M costs, but it's revenue coming in that we normally wouldn't have to reduce that cost.
And we're somewhat behind the curve because in some areas, the development is ahead of the construction that we need.
Yes, ma'am.
For those trans...
Certainly.
And then other areas like this could actually help us develop that area.
Absolutely. Right, you're solving two problems here. You're putting those CDBG projects to work, and you're accommodating new growth. Next project, along Highway 67, we have Superior Utilities. They have the water and sewer franchise between 67 and the city of Biloxi. One of the ideas is to take their sewage lagoon offline, and that does a couple of things. It helps the environment. It also creates revenue for the county, because we would charge them a rate per thousand gallons to treat that sewer. So if you, currently, we have no sewage in that area.
Again, that's a, I want to explain to them about the certificated areas we're not allowed to serve. And if we do put in sewer and they don't give us water, or we don't buy water, whatever, then we basically end up with another situation where we may have revenue, but we cannot collect it.
That is correct. This makes it enforceable to collect that revenue, like you said. It also, it's part of our master planning to take a lot of these individual sewage lagoons offline and put them into the collection system so we can treat that sewage. This project would be predicated on the number-one project, putting in the transmission mains along 67 to go to River, or to Tradition Plant. This would be a good project, a good generating, a revenue generating for the county. The next area I've been getting a lot of calls about is Highway 49, just south of West Worthy Road. We've got some areas here, a couple trailer parks with their own individual sewer lagoons. We've also got 300 acres here that's undeveloped. They have no sewer. They also don't have water, by the way. But sewer is very urgent. These trailer parks have been calling me every month, asking how can they take them offline? Because they're a liability for them. We've also got commercial development in that area that needs it, and so that would pick up a lot of undeveloped area, commercial development, and send it to that River Hills plant that we're putting to work now. We've also got a master plan project to connect this north water system with this south system.
This drink five minutes more.
This area here is along Old Highway 49. Years ago, we had a request for a large thousand-dollar development along Old Highway 49, and this is across from the Limon Fish Hatchery. Well, that project has been revived, and the developer is coming back. Now, we have a, we have the sewer treatment plant here. We have a water well here, but we don't have an elevated storage tank. Those big tanks that you see all around town in the county, those actually store the water and create capacity for the customers. One of the stipulations that we had with that developer is that they would have to help fund that elevated storage tank. When they were ready, we're going to have to match some of that funds to put that into service. Now, if for some reason that development doesn't happen, I would recommend using that money to connect the north water system and the south system so we can get water to those areas on the last line that don't have sewer. And this project is for the southwest corner... And this project is for the southwest corner of the county. What we're talking about is building another elevated storage tank. And what that does, it helps boost the water systems for Past Christian and Long Beach, also the Pineville area. But it also creates enough pressure that we could send water to Henderson Point should we ever acquire that water system.
Yeah, that's private area.
Right.
You put any more pressure in Henderson Point, you're going to blow all those lines.
Well, we have, we have the sewage collection in that area, but we don't have the water. Again, going back to what Ms. Connie said, if you don't have the water, you can't turn the sewer off if they don't pay.
Well, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but what this project is going to cost us should have been taken care of with the CDBG project. For some reason, that pressure for Past Christian and that Long Beach area and Henderson Point area, the reason that we, it wasn't done correctly. It was not built and that should have been called early on. Unfortunately, we didn't, so that's why we're having to consider 1.4, $68 million. Somehow another, they got messed up. That CDBG project was supposed to supply water to the city of Past Christian and Long Beach area, but the pressure wasn't sufficient.
And we're currently serving Long Beach and Past Christian, but this would certainly assist in that.
Derek, we have a 10-30 hearing, just to keep you a head.
Okay, this is last one.
I'm sorry.
So we were, we were asked to add some additional projects for West Harrison Utility District. And these are Kill the Lill Sewer, the Laboue Road Water Area, and Minj Avenue Sewer. We just got those late Friday. I'm not too familiar with them. I just want to say that these are for planning purposes only. The costs are on today's prices. We've experienced inflated costs lately with materials. We've had material supply shortages. We've had to take projects back because we don't have the budget. So I can't predict inflation and how much they're going to be two years from now.
Are you not getting any interest in developing in the East Harrison County area, or it's called just West Harrison?
Well, so the majority of East Harrison is, you got two issues. The Highway 15 corridor, the Iverville has taken advantage of their one mile franchise area. So they've put all the water and sewer in within one mile of their city limits. And then above that, you got on National Forest. So we, you know, we really don't have any growth in that area.
Just to address the last one you said on water, just go back to what Connie was pointing out. The reason they want that water is they're providing sewer.
Yes, sir.
Where they asking for the water lines go?
Yes, sir.
And it's, they need that control to make sure that people ask Connie referred to pay their bill because there's no water to cut them off. And they were, and they are, and they had problems with sewer arrears.
And that revenue is extremely important because there's so much O&M on the water and sewer, on the sewer, more than the water.
Yes, ma'am.
But we need this.
Right quick, I know you haven't heard, but right quick, what's the total estimated cost? I couldn't keep it.
Everything together, the first group was just over 24 million. And those few that West Harrison added was another three and a half. So we're at 27 to 28 million estimated right now.
And what realistically, when this will ever get done?
We could, we really need to start all a couple of these projects immediately.
Immediately.
So 100 years, 50 years?
No.
I mean, I see how it's going.
Like one year.
It's pretty slow, man.
If y'all could, you know, if we could release the funds, we could get started on engineering the site right away.
That's why I kept emphasizing, let's get going. Let's get the projects we're going to approve and do whatever the government requires us to do to, the mechanics of it. Have y'all got any information on the mechanics of getting this done?
Very little, and we'll continue working with Pam and with Jennifer and making sure that we're hitting all those buttons and checking all of the boxes and everything. But, but yeah, we wanted to put this list together so you could see the priorities and you could make decisions on how many you want to move with. If we let all of them go right now, we could probably have them all in the ground within probably three to five years. But clearly, we need to get some of them in the ground quicker than that and move through.
Generalize what John was asking.
Yeah. One of the questions I'd like to ask before the total, total amount, so I got them out the way. Another one is, I think I had spoken with you, probably just in the final line. There's an area right there north of I-10, District 4, area called Sackham. They don't have sewer in that particular area.
Okay.
Let me take a look at that.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering about where could those funds come from? Any of our, would that count as infrastructure for any of our CARES Act or recovery or?
That's what this is.
Oh, fantastic.
All of it.
Great.
And I might urge that we have some, we have some proj, okay, just a minute. Yeah, we have projects on the books right now that are being approved that have to have this.
Yes, ma'am.
Fair Gilch.
As you brought that up, we've been pioneering some things also. With regard to this 1.9 million, a billion that's coming from the state, we've, you know, the legislature's trying to figure out how we can work together, especially with water and sewer project. We've identified and sent up to Lieutenant Governor, 24 million, now is a lot of it. It's sort of the same, same thing. Where we understood that we received the first batch of money for CARES Act kind of thing, 11 million. And I, you know, I think y'all are by far, but we can use some of that money, 20, if we put up 11 million and y'all match up whatever it is, they will match that. So in essence, a 50% match on some of these things if we're together. So we're going to put 11 million up towards the projects. And like I said, some of these are the same project. And then whatever you match, we're going to maybe do it at 50%. At least 24 million.
Exactly, why aren't you glad it's happening? Some of the same project.
Yeah, it would cost, the project would cost 50%, we'll have 25, you'll have 25, and they'll put up the rest. So there's a sort of light at the end of the tape.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Derek. Thank y'all.
Okay, we're going to number 30, where we have a zoning administrative area. Appeal filed by Joey and Liberty Taylor, the Planning Commission's decision to deny case 5210HC167 for a variance filed by Joey and Liberty Taylor requesting a variance to allow for 5.6, 5 feet 6 each side yard setback instead of required 8 feet setback for the purpose of installing a cargo lift for a new home. Property is located at 110 St. industry, that will attach calls number, the 0213G0103000. Mr. Bock, will you give us the rules, please?
We're limited to a maximum of three speakers per side. In this appeal, I believe only the applicant is here. None of the neighbors attended the Planning Commission or wrote up objection letters. What was requested was a variance, a side yard setback variance for a cargo lift. The Planning Commission was nervous about people being in the cargo lift and cargo lifts are not as safe as an elevator. There's a-
In their opinion.
In their-
Let me ask you something. So nobody opposed this, except for the Planning Commission?
Yes, ma'am.
The neighbors were cool with it, everybody, nobody complained, except for the Planning Commission, you are correct. Okay, so I'm sure I understood that.
Mr. Martin, can I, can I make something clear real quick? So venture the board's not voting on whether or not a cargo lift goes on this variant.
Right.
The board's jurisdiction is truly limited to whether or not the variant from 8 feet to 5 feet. We don't have a cargo lift, we don't have a right to object to a cargo lift or-
Which shouldn't even been on there.
It's just a request, a question of whether or not there should be a variant, period. We don't have a say so in what they put in the variant.
So next time, knowing that, we probably shouldn't even, all they want is a setback from 8 feet to 5 feet 6 inches.
If he had applied for a building permit, we would have caught that and they possibly could have done it, so.
But right now, that's all we need to consider is the setback.
Just the variance, we don't have jurisdiction over the-
I'll be clear on this.
Mr. Taylor is here.
Mr. Taylor, would you come state your name and address for the record, please? Thank you for your patience.
My name is Joey Taylor and I live at 110 St. industry in Past Christian and Henderson Point. I am humbly requesting a variance to keep the cargo lift.
No matter what it's for, you just want the variant.
We don't want the cargo lift.
Sorry, we don't care what it is.
I'm only requesting a variance.
2.4 feet.
30 inches, I guess, sir.
30 and 30. 8 foot, 8 foot is required as far as-
5.6.
And he's asking for 6.6, 5.5.
That's an expression, 30 inches.
Foot and a half, 2 foot or whatever.
So we have 5.6 instead of-
But the motion that we give, we give him the variant second.
I understand you're responsible for what you put in that variant.
Yes, sir.
I said we gave him the variant. I stated that.
So we're granting the appeal filed by Joey and Liberty Taylor. Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, signified by I.
Mr. Martin, can we ask if there's any opposition here, just in case?
Well, I thought he said there wasn't. Is there any opposition?
Anybody here opposing this? That will make your own decision.
He carries.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go back to, we'll go back to number four. Recognize Kent Jones with Jeff's Development Designs, Presenting Care Award.
Can Mr. Kent state his name and address?
Kenneth Jones, 919 Second Street, Gulfport, Mississippi, 39501. Thank y'all very much for having me today. Project kind of in the infancy stage still, but moving along fairly quickly, actually. So, start here, so started back in March to my daughter, here Fraser, to the end of the harbor, Mount of Moses Pier. And-
What harbor?
The Gulfport Harbor, playing by Moses Pier down here, it's the port of Gulfport and things like that. Started jumping in the, in the water, took a little video, and it was amazingly clear. I'd sent it to Rebecca, actually, I said, guess where this is? So she thought it may be Ship Island or somewhere else, or Forge Beach or something. And I, you would think so as well. But it got me asking a lot of questions. Why, why is this water clearer here than maybe some of the other areas along Mississippi Gulf Coast? And learned a lot in the last eight months. But of course, one thing that we've always heard is barrier islands and Mississippi River trapped in sediment. We have four major arteries or riverways that empty into the Gulf of Mexico, which creates an amazing ecosystem for marine life, but also creates clarity issues as well.
Shallowness of Mississippi's sound too, didn't it? How shallow it is?
Well, that is another major thing. So there's a couple of things, right along our shoreline to the deep water poles, I mean, you're talking about three or four feet deep. So if you can imagine, always use a jar full of dirt and water. If you have it, if you let it settle for a while, all the dirt goes down to the bottom and the water in the rest of the jar is kind of clear. Shake it up for just a second and it's dirty again. So that's kind of what is happening in between the deep water poles and the beach. We don't have big waves, but we have waves. We have tidal flow and stuff like that. So those particles there are always in suspension. Also, this area, as you can kind of see, has more white sand as opposed to all the sediment that's been trapped closer to the shore for so many years and tannins. So in March, tannins is something that I never knew about, but it's decomposing organic matter, which is leaves, branches, you know, various things like that to turn the water color when they decompose. In March, you don't have that as much, right? You have weather and then everything's just prodded from there. So, let's see. So started exploring this, I've met with a ton of people that have very much enlightened me on the various things with this. Their first meeting, or one of the first ones besides with Rebecca, was with Chuck Loftus, Harrison Beach, and Jack Luntner, city or county engineer. But they talked about some of the issues that they've had. I mean, obviously, anything that happens on the beach would have to go, you know, and be approved by Chuck as well and his team. But one thing, of course, we've talked about beach erosion. I know that y'all are well aware of that and the cost that it would take to replenish the beaches that we've lost, sand blowing on into 90, which talked about this meeting and every other meeting since then. Pier damages, half of the piers probably are in use right now. And one thing, this was in April or so, but Chuck had said that there was about a million dollars just in storm water pipe damages after Zeta. So lots of things that can be solved with this, improving water quality and clarity. So combine and filter some of the storm water pipes and use oysters to filter out some of the water. And then the outcome of all that, which that kind of, this started as how do we make the water clear? And obviously, that's a great side effect of it. First of all, I want to emphasize, we're talking about Ship Island clean, you know, clear as opposed to the Caribbean or something. But that's the outcome that we think can come of this project. So there's several potential test sites that we looked at and we can still explore. There's some redundant studies and things like that that'll have to be done. But we ran this site by Alice Monroe and Justin McDonald at the Corps of Engineers. And they did like this site and may like some other ones that are already impacted, if you will. So if you look at the port of Gulfport, the jetty that comes out for the harbor where the Grand used to be and Island View is now, this site is very impacted already. It's not a natural pristine area. The entire Mississippi beach is man-made, but this area is way more impacted than others. So trying something here isn't going to disturb marine life and things like that like it would maybe in another area. So the line that we have out there where it says 4,000 feet is the deep water poles, basically. And it's about, which is about 1,000 feet out from the beach right now. So completed project, I'm going to go over each of these in a little bit more detail. But basically, at the very end, at the deep water poles, we'd install a breakwater barrier, which is the wave attenuation devices we talked about. We're going to combine storm water pipes and, and filter those as they get outside of the system. We will create living shorelines along the backside of it, dredge the recreation area to six or eight feet to deal with the particle suspension issue. Use some of that sand that we're getting to build the living shoreline, put some beach back that we've lost to erosion, and then put oyster habitats at the entrance and exits of it.
And, excuse me, the oysters they all know are probably not for consumption. These are like filters.
Yes. There's some places that this continues that we could use them for consumption, but being this close to the port, they won't. They still do their job. Oyster filters about 50 gallon, one oyster filters about 50 gallons of water a day. So amazingly, thing I heard in Pastaculla, they try to oyster reef over there and they, they can't aim, but they, because they have large copper and contents. But, that's right, that's what they're doing. That's what they're supposed to do is clean the water.
Is it working?
It's working and cleaning the water. They're not consumption, you know, like some of the ones that are on Deer Island and stuff are for consumption. And if we do this project in multiple other locations, those could be leased out.
But now, just so the public's clear, Supervisor Vladner, and I both are very aware, this will not be on the front beach and it won't be oyster harvesting where the public can see it.
That's right.
Important to point that out.
Yeah. So step one, there's two ways that you can do this with rock jetties. And then they have these new things called wave attenuation devices. So they're triangular shaped pieces of concrete that you just set out there, they have them on barge, and they actually allow marine life to swim through them and some sediment to build up. They're using them in Louisiana to build up shorelines. So none of this stuff that I'm talking about today is new. It's just all new together and it created a recreational area in the middle of it. So those will be placed around along the outside border entry. And then the next would be to combine those storm water pipes. So at the combination of them, we're going to put baffle boxes. We would like to explore putting baffle boxes to trap the sediment, trash runoff from, you know, 90, things like that. And then filter that water as it comes out. On the left side, basically, that will create, additional studies of course need to be done, but almost like a rip tide to continue that water flow inside of there. And then we'll line it with the articulated concrete mat to make sure we don't have to do this multiple times, right? Prevent erosion.
Supervisor Rocka just brought up something on the wave she mentioned. And I didn't know if you knew that DMR, about three or four years ago, when they built those waves, did a contest with some of the best and brightest university students to see what they could put at the end of those waves to clean that water. Have you talked to them or what's your, do you have any scientific data to show that this works? Or what's your background? What makes you?
Yeah, yeah.
I told you she doesn't say.
Good for you, yeah. I am, I am by no means a scientist, do land development. And, but we have met with a lot of people. My engineer, it's not a engineer that does aqua engineering or anything like that, keeps wanting somebody to tell me that I'm stupid and just to give it up so we can go back to our day job.
I would go back to DMR ran this, and I want to say it was statewide. Y'all remember that, the contest?
It was, it was actually due to a restore program.
Yeah, I mean, I thought they had some great ideas, but they didn't really.
They never did.
They never did them. And we have talked to some of them, and we've talked to DMR, and we've talked to Eric Sparks, who was at the Mississippi State Research Center, Extension Center down here, who was actually, and the next slide I was going to talk about him. He did a ton of work and helped us on the living shoreline and kind of working with him. So, I mean, again, none of it's new, but the filtering thing and going all the way out to the end of it is exactly almost what the, those groups came up with. Is basically creating a wetland slew that, that storm water filter out through and go out past, just further out. It's the same kind of thing, but it just gets further out. So again, dredging the recreation area and building up these areas, adding the sand beach back that we've lost to erosion. And since we'll be gaining some of that back, I know there's been a lot of discussion about the sand on Highway ninety. The best way to do that is, and we're doing some of it now with C X and stuff, is to leave that more natural with walking paths that go through there. So the more natural you can leave it up against the shoreline, the better. Now, I know sometimes that doesn't deal with the aesthetic part of it, right? It's a little bit less, but that is definitely the best way.
The palm trees, not so much.
Yeah, that's right.
Which is not, but there's nothing natural about that beach, it's man-made.
It's all man-made. But the more natural you leave it, the less that you're going to have on ninety. So if we can gain some area back that we've lost to erosion, the beach width or depth or whatever that we have right now won't, won't shorten, you know, from what the public would be able to utilize. Yeah, please.
On that slide there, the storm water, we don't have a storm water management district, which I think is, we should have in place. But the, the one on far, the far left, that, that is for storm water management, correct? And that, doesn't it?
The far left and the far, far right.
Yeah, so that would basically filter everything before it got to the water, which is a big issue that we have. And I, I think the wave is pretty, but I think that is effective.
Effective, right, that's right. And it'd be pretty too, I mean, there'd be more plants and more natural looking and everything else that'll cover or wanting to cover, but being effective at the same time.
Believe it or not, we've had a test, test issues before. We have taken up pipe actually and turned it into all vegetation, which did not work because they just, we found out that couldn't work, so that was a good test.
Yeah.
But over the years, that's, this basically is, I think, a good plan as far as the, the pipe, because you're doing, you're doing it in some subdivisions, I've seen that.
Yeah, it's all, it's all just natural, is what, what you want to do anyways. It best filters is the nature for sure. And then construct a living shoreline, so this is where Eric Sparks kind of came in and helped us out a lot. He actually had done a project in Biola Battery, worked with the Nature Conservancy on a project, project in Biola Battery. So the interesting thing is, you see, they, they actually use rock studies there, we're proposing the wads, but if you look at the left picture and the right picture, if you almost imagine that closer to the thing and creating a swimming area in the middle, I mean, it's very similar to what we're kind of proposing. But none of this is new, is the point to this, we'll be creating more natural habitats closer to the thing, still leaving, I mean, you're talking about having seven, eight hundred feet, which doesn't sound like a long, a long way before these living shorelines start, but it is a long way, I mean, people don't go out that far now, and it'll be deeper.
So Connie, to your point, the outfalls, the, oops, I didn't know that was going to happen, but it's very much, very much like what it was there. I'll use the, I'll use the side, but.
Don't touch.
Not right there. So that'll follow be back there, but then it would kind of meander and have a little bit of grass to filter.
So you're building in a swimming area? I'm confused.
No, 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 that would be on the outside of where Connie was talking.
All right, go ahead. It looks just like it.
So this.
So right there, the left picture and the right picture. The right picture's got a lot more grass in it than the left picture.
This is just another project, imagine it, imagine if you hear back.
No.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, you're fine, I mean, I understand. Imagine if this was all a swimming area, but this little jetty that came out was on this side. So all that would be just swimming area on the outside, but we just filter it out that on the left and right side.
And for a sense of scale better, this is going to be about a hundred acres worth of stuff. So, you know, the swimming area in the middle may only be fifty acres, and that's still gigantic, right? And then so that would be on the sides of it.
And, yeah, it's almost a mile across.
The green part, and you're going around there, what is that?
That's this living shoreline.
That's the grass.
That's the grass you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you the practical aspects of this, let's assume that's successful. How does it apply to the twenty-nine miles of beach?
So I think the very first part would be that we test, we have to do test sites, of course, to make sure everything else.
Imagine if it's successful, how, how do you apply this to the whole twenty-nine miles of beach or, or do you?
I think you would actually try to identify like your, your, your places that are most critical, right? So if you have any kind of facility on the north side, obviously, the undeveloped or the residential is probably not as needed of protection. I mean, the, the goal is to be, you know, you have a recreation area, but you still have like wave attenuation, you still slow that down. So I think that the cities would need to just identify like, hey, we really need to protect this right here. Hey, we've got, you know, this on the north side of the, of Highway ninety there, Centennial Plaza, you can do one in front of them and make sure that you're protecting, you know, a site like that.
So you're not taking use in consideration at all?
What's that?
You're talking about protection, I'm thinking more high use areas.
A lot of high use, I mean, it would be up to the cities and the county to really identify the barriers. We wouldn't propose this for a twenty-nine miles, right?
Well, we own all twenty-six miles.
But in essence, it could be, I guess, to your point, I mean, it, it could go the whole thing. I mean, obviously, it would take fifty years to, to do. But, I mean, the permit, the, when, it may just decide that it needs to be certain areas that are protected.
Yeah, and even for even each city to have, you didn't use the word lagoon effect, and that's what Connie sticks out in my mind, you get this lagoon effect, this natural area, and if each city, like you said, would choose their spot, then it only helps, obviously, with tourism and quality of life for locals.
And we did identify several other places, like in Biloxi, I mean, anywhere, if you look at Broadwater or other areas, ports, harbors, things like that, that have those jetties already, those are kind of disturbed areas, so there's plenty of areas that are on the east and west side of those that have amazing tourism and beach use and things like that, that we could start with and do multiple test sites at the same time.
I think what you're doing is really creating what would, what you say would be a natural, mother nature thing. If you allow it, it would be a natural type of thing to purify the water, to clean it and do all that.
Natural swimming pond, basically, natural swimming pond.
I know a lot of engineers and I haven't met one smarter than God yet.
I know the one gentleman, I can't recall where, who it is right now, and I apologize to him, but suggested that one way to do this, one way to clean the water up and preserve the beach, the erosion, et cetera, is to allow it to go back to its natural habitat.
Which is no sound.
What we do, we go out and we disturb it when we clean the beach and we refurbish the beach. What we're doing, we're disturbing a, a, a natural phenomenon if we were to let it alone, not disturb it. Over a period of years, it would go back to, it would look necessarily like that, but it would accomplish the same goal that you're trying to accomplish. Just let it alone, costs a lot less too. Because this, you got any idea how much this will cost?
Oh, we'll be there.
And what, I'm sorry?
We're getting there.
All right, y'all, get it.
Last thing, creating a oyster habitat at the entrance and exit, so remove algae and nutrients, making it clear water cleaner and sea grass and other marine life. So last part, real quick, just putting some sort of trash measures on the sides of the oyster habitat to collect trash and debris that may be trying to float.
But I am curious, if Mississippi Sound is naturally a muddy water body, based on the depth and all things, of consideration of all things that relates to the sound, how would this not ultimately be affected by the sound itself?
Go back to being natural, with the mud.
Mud, how, how would you?
So the.
Happening.
That's pretty much, we're, we're basically creating a barrier around it for the sediment to, to settle in the living shoreline here, so.
So you're blocking it from coming in?
Block, blocking it from coming in. We're putting the tannins and things that we're talking about out further past this area, right? We're creating a natural barrier to allow that sediment to, it's got to settle somewhere. Right now, it's settling right next to shore.
What's happening here is constantly stirring it up.
And then it's.
So Marlon, one of the reasons we like this is you have a predominantly southeast wind, I'm sure you know that.
That's correct.
So this already has an eastern barrier, that's why we talked about the broad water. Anywhere we can capitalize on an eastern barrier, but it's no different than a harbor and put a seawall to kind of keep the waves out of your harbor. So you have this one protecting, you get in here, we have a little extra protection that a harbor wouldn't. And so, you know, we got to let water flow in and out, but we think we have enough time for that.
Oh, that protection also keeps the sand from building up.
Right, hugely, yeah. And so hopefully, we combine all these things together and be able to do that, create that recreational area, so. I want to say, today, basically, what we're trying to propose to you guys is to give you a roadmap to enter in the next thing. We were talking about, y'all were talking about permitting for water and sewer, and it's just as much as not worse for doing something on the shoreline, as y'all know. So we're talking eighteen months, two years to do all the tests, study engineering, various other things. It's very, very preliminary. And with that, we put together a very, very preliminary budget. As you'll see, most of it's based on percentages and things like that. Some of them, the wads and stuff, we did get prices on, but there's a lot that's going to go into this. I've learned a tremendous amount in eight months, and we haven't started on engineering or anything like that, so.
So you're looking at fourteen million for a thousand linear feet?
Four thousand.
Four thousand.
Four thousand. A thousand foot out.
Fourteen million.
Mr. Martin, when I come back, just, I hate to rain on the breaker, it looks like a great project. Our supervisor's jurisdiction is over the sand beach.
That's correct.
The cities and DMR and all these other agencies south of the sand beach, which historically two hundred and thirty feet from the seawall. That jurisdiction belongs to what, most of what you've got there is in the jurisdiction of the city and all the, there's concurrent jurisdiction with the county.
And Secretary of State as well.
But we don't pay attention to him.
But, no, you're, you're exactly right. And there has to be, there has to be a project sponsor for this, it's not who has the rights to all of the area, but there has to be a project sponsor.
But it is who has the rights, because we can't sponsor something to go and sell it up to this property.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I will say this, first we met with the DMR, and then he said he needed Mayor Billy Hughes' blessing to go further, exactly what you're saying. And so Billy Hughes gave his blessing, and then the court you have spoken to, that you needed their blessing. So he really has gone through all of these.
The city of Gulfport would not need Secretary of State Tytman's in order to do a recreational project related to the harbor and/or to a recreational facility along the sand beach. That's what the court just ruled in, in the case that we had. So they don't like that zone in the middle of the Supreme Court, but that's the court's ruling. So the city has jurisdiction to do that, the county has some current concurrent jurisdiction, but the jurisdiction of the sand beach is separate from that. I'm not saying the county couldn't participate in the project. Sand beach is different than.
What there's kind of, I think, I don't know if you considered it, when you're trying to clean that up and have a good, you know, swimming hole, as you. Call it swimming.
Hey, good.
One of the things that has you consider is the fact that water is coming out off that highway drain and it's coming through from the cities. If the sewer is not properly managed, the sewer is going to contaminate that water. Coming, coming from the highway, coming from the, the land north of the highway.
Yes, sir.
If the sewer else flows, if the sewer is not.
We have to.
If it's contaminated, it's coming in there, how do you deal with that?
It's, it's going to be required to make sure that we have the water flow coming in and out, because it's not in this thing, you have what they would call dissolved oxygen, and if we just made it stagnant, well, you would kill everything in between it and then two or three months.
Deal with that by water flowing in and out.
We'll have water that's still coming in, water's still going out.
And, I mean, basically, one, with the storm water part, you're going to be combining them, and then the goal is to make sure that the water does not stop and go into there. It's going to go outside of the system, it's going to go all the way to the thousand feet, right, outside of it. But to Andy's point, exactly the same thing. So with this, we said that there's a lot of advantages, one of the, the ultimate output being the swimming hole right in the middle, but we're looking at buckets of money too. So who's going to pay for it, and that's what we looked at the whole time, and that's what we'd like to also outline for you guys. But the shoreline protections being done all over the place, that's usually a Corps of Engineers thing. And they're doing it in South Louisiana, so all that. The larger buckets, as y'all are aware, not for tourism dollars with, with the BP monies, they're for water quality projects, which this is. The outcome is that we get a great, clear, better clarity water recreational area, right? That's the outcome. But the funds to pay for it can be from other places. There still does have to be a project sponsoring. Harrison County may not be the right one, that's what we want to look into, is it the Nature Conservist, who did that Biola Battery project? Is it Harrison County? Is it the city of Gulfport? But the best thing about Harrison County being it is you don't have to have different ones, the city of Gulfport, the city of Biloxi, Bassett, Chan.
But you will have.
Well, you have to have their concurrent, you have to have their, their authorization. I'm not saying that you wouldn't have to get their, but you could still be the project sponsor.
And state, the state of Mississippi claims that the Gulf of Mexico belongs to them, and they charge quite a bit of money for those leases, so perhaps the state would be.
The state maybe, yeah, right.
One of our biggest supporters.
Michael Watson, yeah. So expect the savings, we're talking about the damage and dredging and erosion and things like that, that's come up as well. And of course, the tourism impact as well. We did meet with Rick Carter as well, obviously, this project has a large impact on, on his operation. Potential for this was very enticing to him, and he was a hundred percent on board, so. He'd love to have something like this closer to this facility.
Oh, exactly, the port may be about.
I don't think that the money part's the issue, we have to get to for the actual construction part. I mean, and, and once it's successful, getting it in multiple locations, I don't believe will be either. It's just getting it to that point, proving that it works, proving that the engineering part works, proving and getting all through all the sea turtle studies and the sturgeon studies and various other things. So there's a lot of that that's going to have to go into each location that we'd have to do. Some of it redundant, some of it not. We may want to try and do a couple of projects at the same time. But today, we'd like to take, as we've spent countless hours in this, I'm kind of at the point where we're going to start really doing this more and getting into it, or let somebody else take the reins, right? So what I'd like to propose to y'all today is to give you a roadmap to complete stages one through five, which is to get you to the point where you can permit. If y'all decide to do it, great, you don't have to, you don't have to do any of it. But we can have a roadmap for somebody, y'all or someone else to, to follow, to get you to the permitting, and then, then once you get past that, then you have to go to the construction phase, right? So we're not talking about spending fourteen million dollars, I ain't talking about spending any money today besides authorizing us for, to do consultation services to give you that roadmap.
But you're not going to do this for free.
So it'd be a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour or maximum twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Like Tim said, that's, one of the cities contributing, or, 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 one of the city of Gulfport contributing to your consultation, since they're going to benefit from this.
But look, let me ask you this, so if we do. But look, let me ask you this, so if we do the twelve thousand five hundred, we're gonna need a contract.
Yeah.
Can't just use this.
A hundred percent.
Give it to Tim, and it's gonna have to be based on his approval of the contract.
I agree.
Spell out this couple of words.
Absolutely.
Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but I'm fine with doing the twelve, if y'all are, I mean, it's.
Let me ask, I'm kinda like.
It's a good project, but I'm not sure it's the responsibility of this board of supervisors to do that. Have y'all talked to the city of Gupport about it?
Yes.
Are they willing to pay something?
Have you talked to the city?
We have talked to the.
Why the board of supervisors when that's actually the city of Gupport has as much in this as we do, if not more?
I think you first called me because it's the sand beach, you know, and it's.
The sand beach, but I'm really involved.
But we spend so much replenishing our beach.
The water quality.
I think the sand beach, that was where it starts, though.
I don't wanna debate, I'm just curious, have y'all talked to the, the city of Gupport?
We have talked to the city.
And what did they, what did they say about paying the consultancy?
I've not proposed that to them yet.
Has proposed.
Um, and we tried to get to the next, I think the best thing about Harrison County taking it is because it is not just a one-city thing, I think that this has the, not only potential, but the likelihood of doing in multiple locations, and.
But it is a benefit to each city.
It is a benefit.
Though it's not, it is the cities that, it's the cities that benefit from the tourism dollars through sales taxes and other things. So the cities have a dog in this fight, but it seems like it comes to the board, seems like just because of the beach. Well, the beach and hunting are necessarily directly involved with this.
Well, if I get into it, Carl, how much do we, we spend replenishing our beach? Part of their plan is to dredge, to get the lagoon effect, and all that sand will go directly on the beach, so it is.
Fourteen million dollars for that small area is not going to benefit us as far as reclamation of the beach.
I, I'm answering the question of why he, he came to the county, because it is the beach, and the dredging would directly save us money going back on the beach, that's all.
And this is a very small portion of it, right? We have permitting and everything else, so of course, whenever we go to that stage, Ms. Widener.
Yes.
Is, we have, we have this initial stuff, but wherever these are gonna be placed and the permitting that's gonna be done, that's definitely the appropriate time to not only ask the board of supervisors, I mean, but to ask the cities, the DMR, the Corps of Engineers, all these other agencies that have the buckets of money, and get the benefit from it for those things. I understand your reservation, I, I, the reason I did it is because the sand beach does run the twenty-six miles, I guess. And I, I would rather, I think it's easier to have one person that's kind of spearheading it, like the Harrison County Board of Supervisors, as opposed to four cities.
The city should be paying for it, is what I'm saying.
And they will.
To get started, that's it.
I do agree that the board would have authority to do this, because it comes with the nature of protecting the sand beach and the seawall, because when you build this project, you're gonna create a protection for erosion from the sand beach in the future, not just replenishing it, protecting it and coming up with a plan. I think the board has the legal authority to do it, now whether or not the city should or should not. Now, when I say do it, do the study, when it comes time to do the project.
Damn, we got it.
The cities, the county jurisdiction.
I'm not questioning whether we have authority, I know we did, I'm just questioning, proving, why is it that the board of supervisors are the ones that they come to?
He was just showing us the respect to come to those persons, and.
And that's not what, I'm just simply saying that every time something happens, they come to us for funding.
At least he liked.
Well, it's, it's something, it's twelve thousand dollars, it's twelve thousand dollars to get started and to give you a, give us a footprint, so.
You've already spent hundreds of hours, I know, because you and I have been on the phone probably a hundred hours already about this, so I, I'm fine with making a motion to pay the twelve thousand five hundred.
Obviously, we have a lot of contracts.
We can't do that without a contract.
We can put together a contract and get it for that.
Based on contract.
Attorney's.
I'll second it.
So we'll, just so we make sure we're not overriding the entry into a contract subject of the attorney's approval.
We have voted yet.
Okay.
You got a motion for?
Yeah.
Yes.
Discuss.
Discuss. Where is the fourteen million dollars coming from? We don't know yet. We have no earthly idea, and I know I'm not gonna support the Harrison County board supervisor spending fourteen million dollars for, and I'm just being upfront with y'all.
Wouldn't expect you to.
I mean, your private, it sounds, but we fixing to spend even twelve thousand dollars, we don't know where the funding's coming from.
But I think that's what's in the plan.
It's like we do these studies, and these studies wind up on a ship somewhere, and nothing's ever done. We're spending money for study and consultants and everything, so I, I, I'm not, if, if we don't have a source of funding for the project, why study it?
But it was all.
Well, we did a study for the flooding at, on Canal Route Twenty-Eighth Street in that area a few years ago, but we had a funding plan, and we knew where the funding was gonna come from if we got it approved, and we did spend some money on that. We're fixing to, even twelve thousand dollars, and we don't know if you get a study and you don't have the fourteen million dollars to pay for it, so.
Could you, could you include in your proposal to identify potential funding sources?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, under.
Potential funding options to pay for the research and studies and.
Not optional sources.
Well, and Kenny, one thing you have not mentioned, and we don't wanna mention names, but just mentioning it to a few private business owners, they've offered to put in money, so I think this will really even get private assistance as well.
Well, and mentioning it to, like, I won't mention names, but generally, the person in charge of the DMR has said that they're willing to take it straight to the governor, uh, it's a, it's a restore, it's probably the number one idea for now, but, um, you know, the Corps will pay for the hard stuff, they're not gonna pay for the soft stuff, so it may be that you get a little restore money from the governor, you get a little money from the Corps, but that's part of what we want it for.
But you got to buy the permit from the Corps.
We will.
I don't understand they're gonna give you money and in charge of the.
The Mississippi would, uh, the Mississippi would fund it, and then Allison would beat us up on the permitting, so it's a left hand, right hand.
There is actually, uh, the Mississippi program, Mississippi program actually matches a lot of funds and things like that, too, to, for research and development and everything like that, so there's a lot, there's a lot of funding sources for the actual project and the research, so.
We'll take your consent.
That's what I'd like to, yeah.
And with all due respect, I, I think that's what's included, he's got to start somewhere, and he's got to take the project, find, put it together, take it to the, the people that have the money. So without some type of starting point, and I think twelve thousand five hundred for a starting point that could probably help us with the aesthetics of our beach water would be, and the health and welfare of, I mean, the health of our, our whole Gulf of Mexico, because the Gulf of Mexico is being inundated.
Okay, let's just.
Let's call the questions.
If the environmental issues.
For all the questions, Attorney Halloman, would you restate the motion, please?
For authorizing the entry of a contract with, what is the organization? Do we have a name? That was developed by him to do this study for operation, clear water, um, subject to board attorney's review and approval of the contract.
So we have a motion, second, any further discussion?
We don't have a second.
I second it.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. You two didn't vote?
We did.
I made the motion, she seconded it.
Okay, I was happy, much the curious.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, report from legal counsel concerning payment of claims. This was left from the last meeting.
First of all, let me say, I don't see, I have not seen any of, any issue with Harrison County on any claims, including any one of the official. Ultimately, the board will know, there are two issues with the claims docket. The claims docket needs to be reviewed and signed by the president, and after the president, the vice president, and the board is, has to approve the claims docket on a monthly basis. There is some conflict in the statute where it says daily the board presidents will review the claims docket, and they reconcile that with another statute that says once a month, the claims docket will be approved by the board. You know, Secretary of State said, we don't have to do it daily. Anyway, these are old antiquated statutes that come from a day when you probably had four or five claims that the board president was looking at, also the day when supervisors were over their beats or districts. Not a current day where the board supervisors primarily submit, so it's a policymaking body. You're not involved in the day-to-day operations of the county like they were a hundred years ago.
What you were gonna check on is to find out what happened in Stone County.
I'm leading up to that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I'm really coming from Harrison County's perspective. Again, this is still not clear, I did review the information from Stone County. I'm not sure that the state auditor is correct on a large part of what they said, but I don't have the backups to determine that. But Stone County, just to break down, and we do not have this problem, the circuit clerk of Harrison County, make that clear. Both the changer clerk and the circuit clerk have made sure that they've got the documentation. Just based, and again, this is without looking at the details of some information that I've been able to review so far. The primary issue in Stone County was the circuit clerk was turning in his bills, I'll call it, and they were not approved by the circuit court. Some of the, some of the documentation, and not all of it has to be approved by the circuit court, which is why this gets so confusing. Some of the payments to the circuit clerk are by statute, uh, and they do not require court approval. Some other payments that primarily deal with attending court and things of that nature. The statute specifically says the circuit clerk, the circuit court clerk, the circuit court judge shall allow the circuit clerk these expenditures, and then it must be under order of the court. Apparently, in Stone County, uh, the circuit clerk, previous circuit clerk, uh, had submitted his invoices without court approval, in some instances, there was no signature at all. Sometimes the signature is illegible by the circuit judge, sometimes the signature was just the circuit clerk's signature he signed where the judge was supposed to sign. Nobody caught that, and the board approved it. Now, what the claims docket says, the claims docket law basically says that if a number of board supervisors votes for, in support of the claims docket, and that there turns out to be a payment unauthorized by law, that the individual board of supervisors can be liable on their bond for that voting in favor of the going, not by blindly vote against it. Our cert, our changer clerk prepares the claims docket, and he makes sure that all the documentation on each and every claim, the backups are there to support that claims docket, and so, and they keep a record of that. So that's not what was going on in Stone County, apparently, as I understand it, the circuit clerk there was, in Stone County was placing these on the agenda on its own, on his own, and that it wasn't going through the clerk of the board, and so those items, well, it, it's, I doubt, I know the individual supervisor did not know, they were just, it's an elected official, and they were approved an elected official, but some of the bills clearly, in my opinion, were okay, they're not unauthorized by law. Some of the bills, it all, there's another issue that there must be an actual loss to the county. They changed the statute many years ago, you used, you were just liable even if there was a loss to the county. They've now changed that and added in a phrase, if it results in actual loss to the county. For instance, in Stone County, I question whether or not, if the circuit clerk turned in his bill for attending court, so to speak, but he didn't get the judge's approval of that, but he did attend court, is there an actual loss to the county anyway? But, so there's many, many issues that are, that are difficult. I, I do think that, and I've talked to the changer clerk about it, that some of these bills that require court approval should not be put on the claims docket, so the board has the opportunity to look to make sure the court orders there, and make sure that the, the court, because those, those particular statutes specifically require that the court allow it in our, in an order of approving it. So without that, that would technically be an unauthorized expenditure, even if he actually attended court or grand jury. Some of the allegations there are not, again, this is preliminary, for instance, they, they claim that he had gotten paid for elections when there were no elections in Stone County, again, not Harrison County. Well, by statute, he's entitled to a annual payment for elections, whether or not there's elections or not. But they, yeah, that's on their list. I don't know, again, the details of it, I'm just reading a ledger sheet they provided that has this list on it. Most of what they're claiming that related to the board supervisors has to, has to do with approving expenditures where there was no court order of authorizing that or allowing that expenditure, is what it appears to, that relates to the board. The claim against the former circuit clerk of Stone County is much broader than that, so the claim is somewhat limited against the board. I don't think you have a problem in Harrison County. It is a problem practically, because our, Harrison County's a large county, a hundred and fifty million dollar a year budget. There's a lot of claims, it's virtually impossible, in my opinion, for this board supervisors to look at four or five hundred claims with the backups each month, and go through and make sure that one of them is not, there's not a problem with one of them. When I say problem with one of them, the problem may be just a technicality, not a, an actual fraudulent claim. I doubt we have very many fraudulent claims, if any, and so, because they are checking those. We go to the changer clerk, the changer clerk has somebody assigned that is putting together the claims docket, and they are looking at each individual claim before they put it on the, on the claims docket, and if there's a problem, they try to address it before it even goes on there. The statute requires that you look at each, literally, this comes back from a day where you had four or five claims, literally, the board could, you know, do each individual claim and approve them one at a time, which will take forever.
What's our average claims?
Four hundred was the last claims docket. Well, the one for today is larger than that, I think.
That's.
But I can, I can address some improvements that you would like, and what we'll do for the board. Uh, the claims docket, the claims docket that we've been sending to you Friday before each meeting, obviously, your concern is not the actual invoice and the backup. So we can develop and put in a, I've already hired, uh, the current software provider to tweak the system where we can do real time when we're entering this. The way the system is now, we make a claims docket, but the full backup's not attached. So this new software, the bookkeeping department will enter the claim, get a claim number, and have a backup assigned to that claim number, just like what I've been sending you. So we can do that, and as far as the reviews section, dealing with president and vice president, it's just my opinion, I think five, uh, three days before the meeting is prior to the meeting, they're both seeing the claims docket, they're both, uh, however, we've never had the board president sign or the vice president. So I have sent off for a written opinion, or requested a written opinion from the auditor's office, reflecting the statute's outdated, it does not address the digital age, which your, your docket is digital. Uh, that digital record, when a auditor comes in to audit, uh, audit the county, that claims docket's there, and they can, we scan the full backup, so they're able to audit electronically. So they're addressing it, they wanna try to address what we've been doing, they think that this is, don't mean a insult to you, but a little overreaction because of Stone County, some of them do not agree what's going on up there, but anyway, you have my, uh, Tim wanting me to take responsibility, but I can't take responsibility for the claims. Only what's submitted, signed off, and what's legitimate, power bills, so forth.
John, the bottom line.
He tried yesterday.
The bottom line is, the information you get, you, you only go by what somebody else is signing off on. There are no guarantees, uh, you know, was the receiving done properly? You know, uh, all of the invoices, you, you getting, all you getting is information from someone else and ultimately submitting it to us. So even if I look at it, just like when you look at it, the only thing that you, the only thing that you can determine to make it.
The difference is.
Catch anything illegal for, and I use the example, because that's the one that comes to mind. If John receives on a, uh, the claims docket are the information he can, Harrison County spent five thousand dollars on alcohol, damn, you know that's illegal.
And I didn't get any.
But my point is that he doesn't know.
Right, that was my question.
He does not know, he's looking at the same information.
Let me answer that.
Yeah.
Um, through my twenty-five years, when there has been a question, especially when you're trying to assign a fund that is coming out of, and if it's unusual, which rarely we've ever come across, uh, we contact the county administrator, whoever. We want to make sure, we try to make sure that claim is proper, because you have to assign where it's being paid. So, the normal process is, is, is county doing business. And we're used to that power bill. We're used to the constable's settlement with the clerk. We're used to also when our backup is a court order that you haven't seen from the circle, by the way, you didn't pay me last week. So.
That's cute.
I'm kidding. Anyway, I'm just. What I'm, the point I'm trying to make, when we are billing this, for instance, the chanter clerk's office, bills for the statutory auditor fee the board pays or, uh, and treasurer, so we spread it over twenty-four months.
What month?
Twelve.
Twenty-four payments, excuse me.
Yeah.
So, each, each claims docket, we break it down. And it is by statute. We put the statute with the claim. What I want to propose to you, if you want to do this with real time, we'll break it out of the claims docket. Because once you complete the claims docket, you can't go back in. But the images for the full backup, I can send you throughout the month, like one week.
And again, how, how do I know if I see the full backup? What's submitted is, is it properly, I'm, I'm gonna look at it just like you do. I'm gonna look at the signature if somebody signs off on something. How do I know it's not a fraud?
That's the full document. Right now, you're only looking at a list of claims, and you're concerned about backing it up. We can send that. This software will allow that. We'll send it to you two, you know, like two.
Still missing the point.
I thought as a clerk that you were responsible for making, I thought you told us that you're responsible for making sure all the backups there.
Yes. It is. And that's how you get audited. I'm the county auditor, so I.
Why don't you just sign what we're guaranteeing that the backups there?
As county auditor. Uh, and the chanter clerk's responsibility is the record of this board. Okay? So, I'll make sure the record's there to, to back up your actions. Everything you do is the responsibility of the clerk for the record.
Why don't you just guarantee it?
You're breaking up. I didn't hear that.
It's not that, I don't think the whole point is whether you sign off on who signs off on. I think the point is, how can a board of supervisors, and maybe it's something that we need to take to the legislature, and have that changed? How can a board make sure every single person that is responsible for submitting a bill to you is doing it correctly? Maybe it's an accident, maybe it's not an accident, but whatever it is, if the law is going to hold a board, anybody, or a circ, this board or any.
Who are they gonna hold responsible?
If the board of supervisors, I mean, and I need to apologize.
Some secretary somewhere?
Yeah, but I want to apologize.
If the bill is paid, that somehow she missed something that's fraudulent, she's gonna be or he's gonna be liable for a fifty thousand dollar bill.
Tim will agree with you. They can rescind that payment and somehow, I mean, once you recognize.
Kinda, kinda you're saying that the legislature needs to change the law. Who are they gonna change? What is the law on who the law is going to hold responsible?
This is, this is what the law, the.
And one other thing, before we fir, before we get off of that subject, I want to apologize to the constable. I was using the constables as a example of the big picture of what our concern was. I wasn't picking on them. I wasn't picking on anybody. I mean, everybody does a great job. It's just that I'm concerned is the board, and I think that's what we were concerned about, if we sign off on a claims docket that you give us and you're taking the backup and the backup's incorrect, and you don't know it's incorrect. How are you going to know it's correct?
Well, again, since I have the floor, I think, I'm not saying word.
Actually, Mr. Holman, I think Johnny took it wrong.
I assure you, please visit bookkeeping. I've asked the board many, many times, if you ever have a question, if you need any information, please come see the process and what we do and how we classify it. And like I said, we just don't throw something out there and, and stick it in the general fund without some, you know, credibility behind it. So, I think we have a, a, a good system, but I will provide you with all the backup. I will provide the vice president, the president, uh, the president way in advance of the full backup for their review. And the review is not a. All right. Let me, I understand.
What's the checks and balances system? That's what I want to hear. What's the process?
That statute is so old, it reflected everything to be in order. Doesn't say the president, the vice president's proving this. The board approves claims. It's just a process by steps that is totally outdated.
Jennifer.
I would like to say something about the internal controls that the county has to, to help eliminate any fraudulent claims. You have a separate bookkeeping clerk from purchasing. You have a separate person that enters the vendors and then purchasing verifies it. So, there's, the duties for the bookkeeping and financial process are spread out, so you don't have one person doing the same thing. And there is checks and balances through, uh, the county administrator's office, John's office, and different people looking at it as well. And I'll review those claims periodically too. And if something comes up, I'll discuss it with Pam or John or, you know, ask more questions. But, you know, I don't really think that there's many fraudulent claims that will come through because there's so many different sets of eyes looking at the documentation and verifying that a purchase rec has been issued, the PO and the receiving and the invoice, and everything lines up and agrees.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Right. And one, one thing, uh, the last time this statute, as far as addressing nineteen thirteen thirty-one, the claims docket prepared by the clerk, it was last updated in nineteen eighty-five, which was way before the digital age. And, and in some of these eighty-two counties, Tim will tell you that, like he said, four or five claims, that's very different. And the clerk was preparing the claims docket in the old days.
Okay.
Hands on. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. We're gonna let Tim talk and then we're gonna move on.
The statute, the statute itself, the change in the statute would simply to make supervisors liable is whether or not, in my opinion, it should provide whether or not you knowingly approved a claim that you knew was unauthorized.
Correct.
The statute already addresses that. The problem is, you're, you're liable if you prove an unauthorized, personally liable on your bond if you approve an unauthorized claim. If you knowingly approve an unauthorized claim, then you can be indicted and it carries a ninety-day sentence. And so.
Thanks for solving all of that.
Well, but if they would just change the statute to say that you're liable if you knowingly approve it, they'd leave that other statute in there. They won't. I have never seen it done. But the, I mean, the problem with this is being liable just simply for proving the claims. I explicitly, one that has six hundred claims on it, it's impossible. And we, you know, I don't think the board should be liable unless it knowingly approved an unauthorized claim. Now, that may not address Stone County's problem because when the claim dealing with the circuit clerk, former circuit clerk of Stone County, they had the paperwork there, but it was not signed well by the judge when they approved it. They just didn't notice it. It became perfunctory. They were approving what was on the, on the docket. Nobody looked at it to see whose signature. Was it probably, truthfully, probably did not know that you had to have a circuit. Because he included his bills, both amounts that were required to be approved by the court and, and amounts that were not required to be approved by the court. They were all lumped into one. And so, uh, that's kind of a problem there. I don't think it's a problem in Harrison County. The chanter clerk doing a good job with the claims.
So, number six.
Let me say one more thing. Now, please, our president, let me say this. I am co-chair of the Legislative Committee for the Chanter Clerks Association.
You're not gonna address.
I will make sure this is introduced this year to deal with the claims docket, to deal with the digital age. I will give y'all a copy to review before it's introduced. Thank you.
Number six, order taken off the table of proven claims docket of October fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seven, order approving claims docket of October fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eight, order approving claims docket, section nineteen thirteen twenty-seven. What date is this?
Today.
Today's, okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Thank you.
All those opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, items nine through eighteen, placement of consent agenda, same opinion, period, and none on the personal. Do we have a motion to approve items nine through eighteen?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item nineteen, order request approval to disbelieve Almstead credit for Mr. Peter Delacander in parcel zero nine zero, state man. Y M zero one zero zero four zero zero three for twenty twenty-one tax year, exempting as parcel of the seventy-five thousand dollars due to inadvertently being left off the books. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second discussion.
Ms. Paula.
I, I just question that I ask. It appears that reading the backup, that it turns John's opinion, is that we can do this.
Yes.
If there's an error. And I guess, based on what I understand, the gentleman just didn't understand. But he, he thought he had filed for the application.
Because he had presented his, uh, proof of disability, his license, and one of my deputies made copies of it and asked him to wait in line, but he apparently thought he had completed the process and left. He thought he had done what he needs to do to receive Almstead credit for twenty-one.
So, and he hadn't.
And because we didn't, we refused to do it. If he didn't complete the process, we refused to do it.
Right. He didn't complete the process. We didn't. It wasn't that we refused to give him credit.
The only concern that I have is that he doesn't understand that. He, he, he has not recognized that he also made an error. He were told to stand in line and wait.
Why they send him to a second line? And I don't think.
I mean, well, I.
Look, it was in January, and in January, we are, are just, it's like a madhouse. And most, most people are gonna be, the, the customers are gonna be out in the line, in the hall.
Yeah, totally.
And, and they're just gonna get distracted because they're, they're having to wait a little while to go through the process.
Just my point that I'm trying to make what I read in there, but he never recognized it. It was y'all's, it was y'all's problem, not he. Yet he was told to get in line and apparently he either misunderstood and he still doesn't understand that. But I, I honest. I just question that. How many people do we have like that that's making errors, Paula?
Very, very, very few. I, I believe this is the first time I've ever, um, had this incident happen.
Well, I, I.
It's very rare.
If, if we can legally do it, they, uh, uh, Department of Revenue, I think, referred him to the board of supervisors. If they, if they found in fact that was the, uh, the issue, we could do it. So, I make a motion to.
Without a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm motion second.
So, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty, order approving mandate of two thousand dollar a year salary increase for Carla Martin. Carla Martin, due to educational achievements assessment evaluator to, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. And for Rebecca Grimmon and Melissa Steiner. So, we have a motion. You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Can I, will this require a budget amendment?
It, it does say it.
Does it have anything? Okay.
It requires to.
Oh, what's that? Yeah.
I'm sorry.
She was gonna read it all. Well, not even bothering.
Motion carries. Item twenty-one, order approving hint candy travel reimbursement for taxes as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two.
It's the same man, the president.
Sorry. It is. Correct. Okay. Item twenty-three.
We need to go ahead. It's only agenda to allow a second one.
Okay, so, item twenty-two, order approving candy travel reimbursement as listed, but this is a duplicate, so we have a motion to deny.
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I do.
Yeah, I saw.
Item twenty-three, order spreading on the minutes personnel changes for tax makers office as listed, don't file with federal court. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-four, order approving travel, Patrice Idrick Kelly, Senator Robin Leonard, code office to attend the building official association of Mississippi's winter conference. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-five, order acknowledging receipt of time extension agreement for the Mississippi Department of Wildlife Fisheries and Parks, land and water conservation project number twenty-eight oh oh six seven three, the Black Sea River boat launch as recommended by Jackie Turner. Do we have a motion? You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-six, order authorizing detached MOA between D R Horton and Harrison County to provide pipe and labor to complete drainage improvements in Magnolia Springs. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-seven, order approving travel for Brian Henry, juvenile and adventure program therapist, to attend the thirtieth annual M A A P conference. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, order approving refund in amount of eight hundred fifty dollars to I nine sports for the purpose of same not being able to utilize S B Avenue soccer fields due to them being wet. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, order approving Almstead travel as listed.
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-one, order taken off the table confirming the claim commission decision to approve case file two one zero nine eight C one seven five for its own amendment and conditional use permit filed by Andrew Jennings. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-two. I'm sorry, Ben.
Uh, thirty-two through thirty-four are regular cases for the planning commission and we'd ask that we cover with the recognition of the time.
Do we have a motion under thirty-two through thirty-four? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-five, order approving claims as listed to be paid in the board account.
Next, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-six, order concurring with county administrator employment as listed on file with federal court. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-seven, order concurring with road manager on employment as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-eight, order spreading on the minutes personnel changes of sheriff's office as listed on file with federal court. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-nine, order approving mileage reimbursement for in county travel for following employees. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those in favor, motion carries. Item forty, order spreading on the minutes list of emergency load loads and state contract orders issued by the purchasing department for the month of September twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Uh, all those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-one, order authorizing advertisement to receive bids for inventory truck and software system to include installation, training, and an annual maintenance contract up to three years. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-two, order authorizing advertisement for red department equipment for two new gravel trucks. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-three, recognize the sheriff or his representative as reports on the number of persons currently house in Harrison County jail facilities. When y'all gonna be there?
Okay, total account is, uh, seven, seven hundred ten. We have thirty-five misdemeanors, one hundred thirteen females, forty-one clear state inmates, and twenty-nine federal inmates.
And how is cruising the coast other than the things we read about in the papers?
Busy, but it went well.
Yes. Thank you. Item forty-four, order approving payments or claims listed below.
Motion.
You're the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-five, order authorizing board president execute quarterly reporting for Senate Bill two thousand two for the sheriff's funding for the law enforcement training academy. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You're the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-six, order authorizing board president execute quarterly reporting for Senate Bill three oh six five for the sheriff's funding for the law enforcement training academy. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You're the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-seven, order G K signature by the board president for Mississippi Leadership Council on Agent Grant Application for the sheriff's triad program. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You're the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Uh, all those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-eight, order acknowledging receipt of four ten hundred for grant number two one C eight one two four one Mississippi Leadership Council Agent Grant for Sheriff's Australia Program and depositing account oh three oh four five three two four one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You're the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-nine, order authorizing board president sign the Mississippi Development Authority Gulf Coast Restoration Restoration Fund request for cash. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty, order authorizing reimbursement to the general fund in amount of sixty-four thirty-one for performed on fire services vehicles. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-one, order approving the final amended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two as attached. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You're the second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, any discussions?
Move on. I need a second. I'll second it. I'm ready to move on.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-two, order authorizing the interfund warrants and repayments for the attached schedule. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You're the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-three, order authorizing transfer from general fund oh oh one nine oh oh nine five oh to the jail repair fund in the amount of four hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the annual reduction in the interfund advance. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You're the second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion on that.
Yeah.
What, what, what is, uh, we're transferring general fund into the.
Jail.
Another account for the jail. I thought we were bump, that's the bond money.
This was jail repairs that were done several years ago, back in two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight?
Well, there was, I believe, a bond that was issued for those jail repairs, and the expenditures were in excess of that bond. So the money came from the general fund. So for years, we've been slowly paying that advance off from the jail repair fund.
This says to the jail repair fund, not from the jail repair.
Well, that's, it's been repaying the jail repair fund because it had a negative fund balance.
So not repaying, we're covering their over.
Well, it's to cover the over, or they would have had to issue an additional bond.
The bottom line is that was not enough in the bond to pay for it, so the general fund's paying for it.
Exactly right, exactly.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed.
Is that what it was? I remember something about that.
Item fifty-four, order approving payment of claims listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You're the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
May I, may I go to the discussion? That, uh, on a J, is, is that an increase that, make sure I'm in the, yeah? That's, that's the same amount we've been paying?
Mm-hmm, seventeen fifty a piece.
I wonder if it wouldn't be prudent for us just to ask for a short description of what, what they were doing.
I would like to do that.
Yes.
And also, I think their contract's up in November first. So I would like to kind of review and maybe bring in that other group.
I agree.
So, yeah. They could give us a rundown of what they've done this year, this past year.
They come in for no women meeting.
Yeah, and then we'll. Thank you. Yeah, I saw it now, so November is it going bad? Item fifty-five, I know. Order approving continuation of proclamation of existence of local emergency within Harrison County due to spread of COVID nineteen. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-six, order approving request from Judge Johnson to have new carpet installed, walls painted, and her suite. At the, uh, Gulfport. Yeah, so they know she got a suite. At an estimated cost of five thousand bucks.
Motion.
You're the second. Who's doing this?
Come out of building and brown.
That's right. They understand, she understands that. She's gonna have to get on the waiting list to get this done. Cause we have got other projects that he's working on.
That's why they have to request.
Okay.
Madam President, that is the chambers.
I was wondering, I never heard of y'all suite.
That's what, that's what they call it in their email for their requests, was their suite.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
One of these days.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-seven, order approving the six month extension for L P A professional services contract between Harrison County and Auto Planning and Design for the, to terminate on June thirty of twenty twenty-two instead of original date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You're the second.
Second discussion. Remind me who's out there again? What was this for specifically?
This is on the health department, the, um, bike path.
Oh, living in issue two, thank you.
Now, we've, we've had, I just, we've had this discussion before. Are we gonna be reimbursed?
Supposedly, but I know we only agreed to pay for the.
We only paid the, the study.
Now we're paying for our research.
We're gonna pay.
We only pay up to, okay, up, we're only paying the match money, but we're only paying up to that certain amount. We make the payments and they reimburse us.
But so far, we haven't gotten a reimbursement.
We haven't paid.
We have.
We have. I could send you out the spreadsheet. We have the match and the reimbursements we received today.
But we only agreed to a certain amount of.
It's under thirty thousand.
On, it was, what is it, thirty?
Twenty percent is the county's match. It's not quite thirty thousand.
Twenty.
All the planning was.
It was close to thirty thousand. But we're, that's all we're committed to. All these expenditures are proven, it's gonna be, we're gonna be reimbursed.
We have, we have some, yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'll send out the spreadsheet from that.
And also ask them for the, the entire list of what they've accomplished. To, I know we get a little, and bits and pieces, but if they'd just give us a, a rundown exactly where they are with their project.
Okay, I can get with that one on that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-eight, order approving titling grant agreement for the Long Beach Pavilion Harbor volleyball area project in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Authorizing board president execute same. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
You're the second.
Second.
Discussion, is that gonna be enough?
Oh, yeah.
Is it? Doesn't seem like.
It should be. Not, if there's some more.
I am glad I learned it. All those in favor signify by aye.
This is kind of professional volleyball. It's, it's not just throwing up and yet the post out there.
Isn't it twenty?
It'll be nice.
Twenty, what is it, twenty, like twenty of them? Twenty?
I don't think it's twenty, but they, uh, multiple.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Yeah, that's gonna be nice. Item fifty-nine, order G K attack to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one for twenty twenty taxes erroneous and those voided applications for related purposes. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? Ms. Paul.
I don't know what to do with this. This is a home state exemption that was an error and they didn't get the home, home state exemption. Got sold for taxes. It was an error in assessment.
That's not the guy we just.
No, no, it's a different person. It had to do with inputting this time.
And it actually got sold?
Yeah, got sold for taxes.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty, order approving the waiver of rental fees for use to West Harrison County Civic Center by Paschus Shannon High School Alumni Association, April twenty ninth thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
They're using it two days, that's strange. I mean, that's fine, but is it usually fun times one day?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, set up, gotcha.
Set up.
creation of no wait zones in the Popps Ferry, Causeway Park and Popps Ferry Bridge. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
This was the meeting by the city.
We have a second, yes. They included an area by those condos. What's the name of them?
Uh, that's by the home, the home, I think, yeah.
Resolution of Harrison County Board of Supervisors amending its request of the Mississippi Department of Marine Resources for the creation of no wait zones in the Popps Ferry, Causeway Park and Popps Ferry Bridge. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
This was the meeting by the city.
We have a second, yes. They included an area by those condos. What's the name of them?
Uh, that's by the home, the home, I think, yeah.
So they just expanded. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-three. Order approving declaration of covenants running with the land between Harrison County, Davenport Highlands, and the Mississippi Development Authority and the Davenport Highlands Board, the Davenport Highlands Development. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
For the second.
Second discussion. Tim, why could we, why could we do that now? Why weren't they done before the mon- money was granted?
Somebody new took over MDA and insisted on these.
Is that what?
But isn't this who we're about to be on the other board?
Yeah.
Why do we want anything else?
But, yeah. This, this will assist. This is MDA's method of trying to enforce something against the landowner if things do go south.
It just seemed like they had daylight dollar chart on it, didn't they?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-four. Order to you gain authorizing expenses listed and necessary to advertise the opportunities and resources of Harrison County. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-five. Acknowledge trunk or treat event we held on October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. There's ten fairgrounds at seven P.M. I'm not sure what this means, but we need a motion.
Motion.
For a second. What's this for?
It's a trunk or treat.
Just 'cause it's a county, uh, um, are y'all do, do you, are they doing a haunted house? Because the, I have had a haunted house.
No. Okay, so. They're not, at the fairgrounds? Yeah, no, they're not doing the haunted house.
Okay, 'cause he just sent me something on there.
The actual has it on there, yes.
Definitely.
Well, you, did you look at that?
I hadn't seen that, no. I know that we're gonna, expecting probably three to four thousand children.
Will you look at what that one sent to the school?
Absolutely.
Please, yeah. I'll give this to him.
Sorry, yeah. Sixty-five, sixty-four P. Biloxi Parks Recreation. Is that the City of Biloxi making that request? Does it, feels that's, I'm not sure, it'll be done on the in local or with, with the city council request.
Oh, you know what? I don't know. Liz would tip late, Liz tip late listening. Come on in and tell us what this is. Well, they go there, listen.
I just Biloxi Parks Recreation is not an entity.
No, see, they do just Halloween on Howard, that Miss Rocker and Lisa from the state.
Now, wait a minute, that's District One, and I don't have anything to do with this.
Well, that's where the request came.
That's your bad.
It's my bad.
It mattered me. They said y'all did it last year, but they aren't doing it.
We did it. They have a, they have a function where they, all the stores participate in a.
Okay, well, then I make a substitute motion, whether may item B.
Wait, there she goes. Asking you shall receive.
We've done this every year.
Okay.
Advertising county resources.
Yes, sir, we're gonna have the county logo.
It's the City of Biloxi.
City of Biloxi, that's my concern, not the, not the, not doing is my concern.
Oh, yeah, it is the City of Biloxi, it's not the Parks and Rec. It's got City of Biloxi on here.
We just, we don't, we don't give them any money, we just participate.
For four hundred dollars is about.
About to buy the candy, and we hand out candy.
So this is.
Yeah, we don't give them any money, we just.
This looks like four hundred dollars.
It's Biloxi Main Street that usually puts it on.
Advertising county, I mean, advertising county resources.
So the four hundred dollars is to come out of the escrow to buy candy.
Yeah, yeah, and we didn't spend that much.
To participate in Biloxi.
Right, right.
So how does that be working?
It's not really, should be under the in local agreements where it should be.
No, 'cause we're not giving, the money's not going to Biloxi, the money is coming out of the escrow to buy the candy.
Well, let's just take it out of advertising county resources, do it separately, as the county's gonna participate as a matter of recreation for the City of Biloxi.
They, they do it, it's a drive-through, they started, um, used to be down at Tamara, but now they're doing, doing COVID, we do the drive-through.
And all the stores participate, and county and the city participate to look to the big, um.
It's all down, and we've.
That's not your district.
That's not your district, we got to represent anyway.
So as you get awarded.
Order authorizes, order authorizes forward to the, uh, Recreation Department purchase order of candy for the Halloween on Howard event as recreational participation for the city.
So let's make a motion on that, and then a second.
Second.
All in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Now, do I need a motion to remove item B?
Yes.
Need a motion to remove item sixty-four B.
Motion to remove.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
She just told me.
Damn, you got anything? I'm sorry, damn, you got anything?
I hope that we have, there was the board has an empty table for questions. Oh, I'm sorry. M O A, M O U is tradition.
In your part, yeah.
This has been previously discussed, and they, they won't get past, they did not get on the agenda unfortunately, so they did an order authorizing execution of the M O U for the traditions, veterans project, if I say wrong. There you go.
Did you get that?
Let me get the resolution out.
I see my.
Resolution approving grant agreement for two million five hundred thousand dollar grant for Mississippi's Development Authority, Development Infrastructure Program to construct public water and wastewater utility improvements and related infrastructure in favor to the traditions, medical city, serve the Mississippi State Veterans Nursing and Home Patriots.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify, I'm sorry.
You're gonna have to sign it, so you need to authorize your signature.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, just motion carries. Okay, Ms. Pang.
That's the second, you come back to me, I have a page that I want.
Are we, or you're not ready?
Yeah, just need to get it together.
Okay, I want to go to Mr. Martin, supervisor.
Yeah, I do have a couple of things. Uh, first is, uh, I just kinda wanna get an update on, on the, a new building that's going up on Seaway Grill, how's that looking?
I asked Jackie, Jackie, um, y'all had a meeting recently?
Presentations, I'm saying. Bet it's not.
Y'all had a meeting re- recently with Mr. John on the building, on Seaway?
Yeah, we met with all four departments, some of the architect to kind of refine all the demands and what things could be combined, which things need to be separated, how the traffic flow would go, how the drive-through window could look, um, and, and all of those sort of details, and he indicated he would be coming to the board, I think, the beginning of November with an update with, um, square footage and everything.
Well, tell him this, he needs to be here. Are we gonna go out for bid again and get somebody that moves a little faster? This has been way too long, and I don't know whose fault it is, and I'm not here to like mine. But we're ready to get started, because while we sit there, the price of materials going up, 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 so we need to get going on.
Yeah. I appreciate it. I thought, the second thing is I was, need to superlative power, I got a call. I mean, actually, I saw it in the video over the weekend. He has a daughter that plays soccer, and he, uh, goes to all the soccer games and matches or whatever. But he also has a special needs kid that's in the wheelchair and so forth. And he just noticed it's very difficult getting hers from one location, one field to the other, where we have no sidewalk. So I just wanted, if the board approved it, maybe we can get Jack in, uh, talk about his body to look at that and see. Some kind of, where we can incorporate some sidewalks out there to connect some of those fields. Just make it somewhat handicap accessible to a degree. So I just wanted to kind of make, make mention of that.
Ask Bobby to help.
I talked to him, he's gonna, I told him I'd get with Jack and they, maybe get together, and I don't know if you have to go to another location that has soccer field that has sidewalks, and I know it's kind of difficult to do that, 'cause soccer season goes, I think, Bob said, goes, people get around, so we just have to, but I know we can make it happen.
It's great, thank you.
At least maybe down the middle or kind of right south.
That'll be somewhere.
From the parking lot, make the handicap spaces there at that corner, and then have it straight, and you can access wheels on both sides.
Yeah, something like that.
Something off your way.
And Miss Rocker?
Um, I have some, a question about state aid and funding that we might, and I think Doug can probably clear that up.
I can. Uh, this is through the LSPP program. Right now, we have two projects. One, the plans are completed, they're up at state aid, we're waiting on the right-of-way.
What pro, what are you talking about?
Uh, this is Moran Road Bridge replacement.
Thank you.
And the second project is Discovery Bay Bridge replacement. Uh, it's in the environmental permitting stage. I will address that with state aid, I'll write the letter. Uh, one thing that we could hope for is maybe accelerating the right-of-way acquisition on Moran Road, that would help out tremendously, because that would be the money that they're talking about rescinding.
Yeah, they're talking about rescinding some funding, and I was concerned about it, and I contacted Doug, who I knew would know the all the answers, so.
Why were they talking about rescinding the money?
You have so long to spend it.
So long to spend it, we had to spend.
And if you don't spend it, they say, okay, it goes back into a pot, you really don't, um, it goes back into a pot, which you are still eligible to apply for. But.
Well, what, what would you want on Moran Road? What, what have we not spent it? I thought that project was complete.
Moran.
I'm sorry, I said Moran.
I'm sorry, I thought you said Moran.
Something, who said Moran?
Yeah.
Moran.
Moran Road, and there was.
And what's the holdup on it?
I mean, we're in right-of-way acquisition state, uh.
Well, does that go against our time?
Yes.
And also an environmental study, there's been two.
But Tim, if.
We're, we're through with environmental.
Are we having to go toward over that?
I'm not sure, Moran Road, which one is that?
It's the one with the, um, we've got two of them.
Oh, okay.
It's the one with the lady with the fence, remember?
So how many more do we need other than the two? Want two more?
One, one's gonna be, one's a probate problem.
I would probably, we'll, we'll look at it and see if we can speed up the process on it, but I would maybe just have to file on the probate issue, that, I remember now, that's the one that's got like thirteen, fourteen.
Well, Tim, if, if, if there's an objection by, uh, if I were laying on and I objected to selling it, I disagree with the price, can't, can't that proceed? I mean, we get it, and then we go to court later on.
The problem with one of them is. Is this the Johnson one that's the problem? Okay, there's, one problem, one of them is got like, no, no estate was ever opened, correct me if I'm wrong, there's thirteen to fourteen heirs. We tried to deal with it, so we can go ahead and file eminent domain on it. I think it's very small, like, how much is it?
Oh, they're all small.
Like three to four hundred dollars, so we're gonna spend some money on the eminent domain.
Go ahead and file the eminent domain, and he can, we can proceed and settle the issue later.
Right. In fact, so we proceed.
I will, I'll address it with the.
I wasn't aware of the problem with, uh, Moran Road, I thought we were moving on that.
In addition, uh, Tim and I sat down and went over some bridges, so I'll be, uh, making another application for getting a few more on the program.
Do you mind the name of the estate so the board can authorize us to proceed with eminent domain? Just on Moran Road, or if I should proceed on whatever eminent domain needs to be done.
I make that motion second. Any discussion?
I'll remember.
Write it up.
Thank you, Doug.
All those opposed, motion carries. And Miss Rocker, what was it you?
I just had an executive session for personnel.
With the department, I would agree on closed session, everyone.
For personnel. Okay, Miss Rocker, uh, Powers.
Um, since, uh, Supervisor Jones mentioned the soccer field, and I really appreciate that, I wanna bring up something that I would like to do for the Benefield family, as you all know, Larry Benefield served our great county for many, many, many years, uh, decades really, and education as well. So I was hoping that y'all would, um, be okay with me, um, he created, I think, he had a big part of those soccer fields being created. Would you all be okay with us renaming it the Larry Benefield Harrison County Soccer Fields in his honor?
I would.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
He finally got something named after him. I've got a wristed cell.
Soon you can recognize me.
Um, comment?
I don't have anything.
You are our most creative child.
All right, Ms. Tom and anybody else. Sheriff Fred, anything, just wanna make sure.
He's just.
Has anybody wanna speak? Anyway. Okay, then we needed a, uh, motion, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pang.
So, we didn't, we, John and I, the, the Jersey Clark about, kind of went back and forth, back and forth on the census, we kept trying.
I came to man.
Kept trying to find an official, an official census, if it was mailed to us, if we ever got one, so we went to the Secretary of State's office, and he sent us something, but we don't have, so to come to the nutshell, I guess, the, uh, census for Harrison County showing that it's two hundred and eight thousand.
That S and B D.
Two hundred, two hundred and eight thousand, two forty-six, I think it was, I don't have that in front of me, but, of two oh eight, six twenty-one. So therefore, being that, being that the justice court judges get an increase in their salary, so I need, uh, to spread on the minutes that their salary is going, uh, to increase.
When is it going to, from what?
It's going to, well, it's going to fifty-five thousand, five fifty-nine, plus they get the three percent that was increased, I think, in two thousand and eight because of the Harrison County. So that's another one thousand six hundred and sixty-six, seven, seven cents, so their salary will be fifty-seven thousand, two twenty-five, seventy-seven. So I need to.
Motion.
Make it effective for October one.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. See, there's lobbyists.
That's dead by that.
Madam President, I thought you were bringing something else.
I will.
And it's code.
I'm sorry.
It's code section twenty-five, three, thirty-six.
Okay, whatever's in here.
Okay, so then.
Meanwhile, back at the supervisors.
All right. Um, Supervisor Powers had asked, had brought up at the last board meeting about, um, the, what Jean Fivede, the Ski Control Director's salary being equal or to our department head, I'd sent an email out last week. So I'd like, uh, my recommendation would be to consider bringing his salary to the fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and one.
Judges.
Yeah, he, he's absolutely right, it requires a lot of training and skill than he's been trained with, so.
So moved.
Second.
Second, the only discussion that I would have would be more equitable with one of the other ones. Higher ones.
Um.
Because of his.
I think we talked about that, but doesn't he get a bump when he gets certifications?
No.
I don't think, I don't think he's included in that, because that's kind of a local.
We can do it, but it's not state required.
Yeah. I don't think they have any state, uh, thing. What, what was one of the others?
But he doesn't have that many people, his supervisors.
Sixty starts next.
How much was that increase, the one you proposed?
What is that?
And he goes out at all hours of the night, they have to run those at night, and two o'clock in the morning.
Oh, I know.
It, it's an equity thing that we're doing, so let's make sure we get the equity.
Right, equity, right.
Before we do it again. I, 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 I just know the skill that it's requiring.
I just think.
The complaints.
It's training, he.
Yeah, because it's kind of all the training on.
Got that training on, all that stuff, and skate, uh, that's just, that's it, make sure we get it right, just that.
So that's seventeen seventy-nine.
What's the next one up in here, what?
The next one is Parks and Rec.
That's a seventeen percent increase, did I hear you get it?
Huh? Seventeen hundred and thirty-nine.
Seventeen hundred. Parks and Rec is what?
Sixty thousand, sixty thousand, so that'd be another twenty-sixty.
I would make a substitute motion to include it, Parks and, uh, sixty, whatever, what does that say?
Sixty thousand and sixty.
So we got a substitute motion and a second to, uh, equalize up to the Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Now he's making more than judges. The judges ain't gonna like this when they get wins over on campus, you know?
Well, as you.
Some of them get called at three o'clock. I guess they do, too. They have to get paid at three o'clock in the morning, Doug.
And then the other, the other one was just informational, that sits, um, had Benefield be retired at the end of the month, I just was thinking, I thought it was gonna be advertised for its, uh, insurance risk management, so that would be advertised.
You need to adjust that salary now, because we bumped her up, and she's been here a long time, so it needs to go back down.
We did.
Even lower to the beginning part.
And, um, we did it's forty to fifty, and what we have done, because insurance, when they came on in HR, they've been doing the benefit side, so.
Well, that's what I thought, now, why are we advertising? 'Cause I thought we had already kind of picked Diana to take over that role. Maria, did that, was that, that not your understanding?
My understanding is that we had eventually absorbed it, but was not specified as to who was gonna do what. Um, Cassidy has primarily been taking care of the benefit enrollment with new hires, uh, and Diana does all of the new hire processing.
So I go back to why are we advertising, we just need to figure out which one of those two.
Well, she does, she does property too.
Yeah, this part, the part that.
We don't need it, that's what I'm saying, we don't need it.
No, this part, this is liability. This is, yeah, this is workers' comp.
Workers' comp's right under the HR department.
Risk management, Mr. DeP.
Yeah, this is two different things, this is two different.
Well, when we had the risk management intern, it wouldn't bother under her.
No.
It did, it sure did.
So, listen, y'all, Patty has the opinion about to tell you, does two, two jobs.
This is the tour plane, this is the tour planes, this is the property insurance, this is, this is, um, the bonds, the surety bonds, the blanket bonds, the notaries, Clint, this is, this is different, and liability playing.
That's nothing for her, that, I mean, come on, you feel like a notary form and a bond, and that's, the insurance guy. Frank Bordeaux does that, so what is it that you say that she does?
Well, you gotta be the contact person, you gotta have a, you gotta do it, you gotta, you gotta have a person to, to do all that.
And Patty, she's, she's calling, she's getting calls by employees all day, every day.
And I get, but that goes, to me, should go back under.
Patty, you're doing two people's jobs, are you suggesting just hiring one person?
I think what they're already doing.
I'm saying not hire anybody, give it to HR.
I think what they're.
Three people, but never, she was already doing two jobs.
It don't matter, I'm just saying, there are three people in HR.
And we were not.
Three people.
We'd never had an HR.
And that was the reason why.
Risk management, risk management is more of a specialized field, it traditionally has not fallen under HR. The risk manager.
Does in other businesses.
The, the, um.
Company.
The intern that came in did cybersecurity, risk management, and safety. That's what he, that's where he shot out, was with the IT department and the safety department.
But in other businesses that are equal, and some even smaller than this size, risk management absolutely goes under HR.
Sure.
Am I right? Mrs. Power, it's under HR. So I mean, come on, y'all, why, we're getting a whole new position.
It is a special.
It's a special.
It's Patty's position, it's not a whole new, she was just doing two jobs, so they can take the benefits, but, but as far as the insurance, like she said, I agree, it's critical for that specialist to understand insurance for properties, I mean, we own millions of dollars of property.
I agree, I thi- I think that insurance.
They're doing the group, they're doing the group, the medical insurance, the I L A.
HR is doing.
Yeah, they're doing all that, yeah, they're doing all that type of insurance, they're doing all the supplemental.
So why are we gonna pay somebody that much money to do one thing and look at property insurance? We can hire somebody as a contract labor that can do just as well, if not better, that has an insurance license. Why don't we do that?
Doesn't matter.
Sounds good.
We still got.
And she's standing here plus.
I think more is forty to fifty, but I would say, depending on their experience, I would, normally you start them at the lower end, and if they're.
I definitely start them at the lower end, and if they don't have an insurance license, start them even lower.
I was gonna say, we could start at thirty-five, or, I mean, it's whatever y'all decide.
I just thought that.
I don't think, I just think that needs to be, that needs to be thought through a little bit.
And where are we gonna put them? Y'all thought about that?
Office.
That's why we did this, y'all, I'm telling you, we took, we relocated Patty for the very purpose, knowing that she was gonna be retiring, and what sent her to your office to work for you, and gave her office to HR for that reason. Where are we gonna put this person? It was for that reason. Where are we gonna put this person?
Let's discuss, can we discuss this maybe in a later?
Personnel?
Let's all think about it.
Think about it, come up with a better conversation.
Where y'all gonna put them? We moved, yeah, I mean, Jeff down there, so that the three HR people.
I think, I, I personally think that we can figure out who we're gonna put, and we can just make a decision on how we're gonna classify this particular position.
Yes, so whether we're gonna be contracted on.
What I wanna classify.
Let's ask.
No, I don't need it.
Let's ask, uh, Bordeaux about it, and see how, if he thinks we should.
Okay, I'm willing to shut up about that.
Okay, is that all right?
We'll ask him if he, if he absolutely needs another full-time person, to look at that one thing.
To help work with him on that.
'Cause I know they got some time on their hands. No, and they got time on their hands in HR, they, they need some.
I, I, I think.
If they're taking on extra responsibility, that's.
It was not extra, it was brought up, and we interviewed her.
No, but if we don't, the only thing they're gonna do is.
It's nothing extra.
Yes, it is, the only thing they're gonna do is, I mean, if, uh, it's gonna get someone looking to, you know, with Ms. Patty, but she was going basically two times.
That's what she said, but I hadn't heard, but what's.
I'm just saying, so we're gonna give all that responsibility to our resource department, then that's.
And we'll discuss that, you're saying bump the salary.
I'm just saying, we're gonna discuss that later. I mean, that's, it's not market science.
I agree, I mean, you could let them maybe do benefits, but for something as specialized as that, it shouldn't.
Well, it's not one of the justices, I bet they do it.
Let's ask an expert like Mr. Bordeaux.
Okay, I'll ask our insurance, okay? And then.
Okay.
So in the meantime, one more thing, I'm sorry, so in the meantime, Ms. Patty's gonna be retired, we don't have anything to say.
That's fine, in the meantime, the HR people can be doing.
Patty's watching, she just texted me and said, tell them I do workman's comp, too.
So Maria just said that she did workers' comp, at least she asked.
The risk manager does.
That's the risk manager.
That's the risk manager.
H R, all that should be under H R, I'm telling you.
As a rule, Maria, what we're talking about, does that generally fall on, uh, H R?
Yes.
As a rule, if you go to businesses or other places, would, will that fall on H R?
Other places I've been to, the risk manager reports directly to the general manager or the C E O.
Where's that?
Other, the casinos I've went to. Now, the Skyler Pearl has recently since COVID put risk management in H R, but prior to that, risk management followed to the CFO.
Not, well, that's your opinion. I worked for twenty years for the casinos, and not one, ever, that I know of, that risk management did not go under H R, never.
Hollywood Casino, Casino Magic, also reported to the CFO, not H R, because it's a separate, it's a separate specialization.
And I will say this.
What about excluding, uh, uh?
I mean, we could take workers' comp, but as far as this building liability is.
What about other, what about other companies, other than the casinos, Maria, does it fall under as a rule? I would assume, you know, I'm asking your knowledge of this.
Because it's, it's a financial liability, the liability typically falls under the, the financial department.
And I will say this, you know, Skylar's doing inventory, so inventory and property insurance kind of going in, maybe we could get her the extra training, offer up a tiny bit.
That's what I'm thinking, instead of just creating, hiring a third person, let's dole those responsibilities up. Diana's got great experience through her Medicaid background, which, she'd be a perfect workers' comp person, because she looks for that. Skylar's already doing it, and I just think there's a way that we could fix this, and we wouldn't be looking for another office again for somebody else.
Okay, well, the problem, we're having an issue there, too, because you've got Skylar's gonna go over there and do Patty's leaving out.
Right.
You're gonna pull her over there, you're gonna pull her over there, and that's untraced. She said she's gonna do our clerical, she's gonna do our clerical, she's, Skylar's gonna do that part.
Well, if she's gonna do that, then we need to find somebody who replaces.
Well, then, no. Why wouldn't she do the whole thing? Why, why, you're gonna let her do it?
She can do all of that.
What I'm trying to say to you, I assume about just hiring an administrative assistant.
No, she would, she would just move into my, I asked Pam if she would mind if Skylar moved into my office and just did what Patty's doing, just answer the rare, my phone goes to my cell phone, and I'm just constantly moving around, so Skylar can sit in there and answer the very few calls, keep my lights on, keep the door open, and still do her inventory job, and if it's okay with y'all, property falls under that.
How, is that, is that gonna affect it? Don't, don't, the person sitting there.
Skylar still does clerical.
Pam and Maria were okay with it, I mean.
She still had, she, we were gonna have to work out with the phones, putting the phones over there, too, and she still has to do clerical support, she still has to do our part, too, she doesn't just do inventory, so she still has to do our part.
Yeah, because she's supposed to be helping Diane, correct me if I'm wrong. Skylar is kind of an assistant to the new Dorinda, so now you, yeah.
She has clerical support, she does.
That was supposed to be temporary until Dorinda left, and she thought she was getting.
Let's discuss this.
That was always.
Okay, it's personnel, so maybe y'all should discuss it.
So, I go back to, um, do we have a motion to talk about going into a closed session to discuss the need to go into executive session?
Madam President, I don't mean to interrupt you, but when you go into closed session, you have to list all of them, so you need to.
Personnel right now is what they all.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, but I thought, I was gonna do that, and you have your own closed session, you gotta come out.
All right, all those in favor of going closed session?
You don't have a motion yet.
You don't have a motion or a second?
Well, I need a motion.
You don't need a second, you do not need a second for closed session.
All those in favor.
I made the motion, I made for a closed session.
All those, all those in favor, sign the paper.
All right, let's clear it out, I don't even know what person.
Okay, got your glasses on?
I don't think you do.
I don't think they do either.
Not for closed session.
I don't think they do either, there's a reason for that.
Right. You can prevent them from going into a closed session.
Yeah, if one supervisor has, that's the whole issue, if one supervisor has an issue, he shouldn't be shut out.
Do I need to make same motion to come out?
You already made that, now you have to vote.
Now we need a motion to go into executive session.
Did you vote to come out?
No.
If they wouldn't come out, on a favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, that motion carries.
Back in regular meeting.
Now we're in a meeting. Are we obligated to notify?
Yeah, you gotta go up and tell them, come, they wanna come back in.
If y'all wanna play about it, strictly about the rules.
She's supposed to go tell them.
You can go out there, come back in here, the reasons why we're gonna take a session.
Oh, they're watching, from their TV stations.
They're watching.
You gotta get out again.
We have nine.
That's it, but I don't think, I asked them, they told me that's mine.
Probably. What we need to do? The volume, go up there to pay for it. I don't know if they have the volume.
Motion to come out of genuine session?
We already have a vote, like, we already in regular session.
Motion to executive session. To, 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 to take the matter, the first number, I'm very involved with the, uh, Senior Citizens Center, Senior Resources Center, and the second issue is a matter of, uh, negotiating a contract with Oceans and naval health, Gulf War Bay of Health, and a matter of potential litigation involving surrounding those issues, those both qualify for executive session of the board, so choose.
Here are the reasons I moved to go in the executive session.
Second.
Tell me the second.
Okay, all right, maybe that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, executive session, I'm not in an executive session, so we're gonna go back here for executive session. Yes. Of course, an executive session of the board discussed the matter of negotiation of the naval health, I'm not a threat, no action, speaking.
Okay, is there any, any further action by the board? Anybody need anything?
No.
No, I don't, I'm saying a motion to.
Motion.
For a second, all those in favor, sign the paper. Motion carries.